Did you see our, uh, the name of the magazine?
Thanks. It's not the cake, oh, here.
That was huge.
For other, ought to be nice to this. Oh, actually, maybe I should put one, no, no, I can just put in one of those things. Yeah, the big one is probably better. I don't know if the small one would fit.
Yeah, they did it a couple of years ago.
Okay, I'll just put it in here then.
That's great.
Yeah, that's right, I'll forget what it is.
I hope somebody bought them lunch.
Welcome fellow Capitoleans to the February 26th meeting of Capitola City Council. Roll call please.
Councilmember Harland?
Here.
Councilmember Bator?
Here.
Councilmember Vertan?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
Mayor Norton?
Here.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. Is Mick here? Yeah, Mick. Correct me if I'm wrong Mick, but you served 20 or 24 years on the city, in the council?
Twenty-four years, nine months.
Uh-huh. Was it always?
(laughing).
Was it always in this chambers?
No, it started in the old city hall.
Oh, wow.
Held about thirty people. And, uh, we've had meetings in the parking lot out here when that building got too full. We've had people throw shoes. We've had people chase each other around in the lot. There's a, there's a long history.
So this is actually the finest quarters that the council's ever had.
Definitely.
Okay, good. Okay. Mick's up here this evening, he has retired from the Planning Commission after serving four years as Stephanie's appointment, is that correct?
No.
Sam?
Sam.
Sam, excuse me, Sam's appointment. But Mick's, Mick's history goes deep and I think that's why he was selected for the Planning Commission. And appreciation for his service, and I'm sure Mick's not going to go away, he's a local Capitolean, he keeps himself involved in city government, and we appreciate that. That, um, that in recognition of Mick's four years, along with his many years of service to the city, we would like to present a certificate of appreciation for him for service as a planning commissioner, a planning commissioner from January 2010, December 2014.
Well, thank you.
Thank you Mick.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good to see you. I had the fortunate experience of serving six years on the Commission on Environment with Elizabeth. Her ties to environmental issues goes deeper than, than just what she does for the city, since she's, at one time was Executive Director of Ambay.
Oh, no, I was just Acting Deputy Director.
Acting Deputy Director, okay. Okay. The Commission Environment is, is a committee within the city that addresses environmental issues and also in, in the last four years, or three years, they actually had taken open hand in, involved with, with the general plan update and also the development of a climate action plan, which is in the works right now with the city. So, in recognition of your six years with Commission Environment, the certificate of appreciation from the city of Capitola, and we thank you for your service and we hope you stay with us because we, that's an active group and we want to see many more things come out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The one thing that I wanted to say is I'm just really proud of being a citizen of Capitola where we actually have a commission on the environment. We're one of the few cities who give this a priority and especially given what's happening with climate action, climate action activities, it is really important that we focus on sustainability and on climate action planning. So I'm really happy to have been able to work with our excellent planning team, our city team, and I would just like to have a shout out to Kristen Sullivan, who has served on the Commission for the Environment and keeps serving on the Commission on the Environment and keeps it going for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Do we have any additional materials to be added to our agenda?
Staff has distributed some correspondence that was received after the distribution of the agenda and that material is on your desk as well as in the back of the room.
This is a time for public comment. Anyone who would like to address the city council on any issue not on our agenda, please step forward. Marina, and this is stuff not on the agenda, correct?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, you got it. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Marie Martarella.
And Tricia Proctor.
We are just here to thank you all for the vote of the last council meeting. Just wanted to let you know we are actively moving ahead with our plan in the permitting and planning process and we're hoping to move as quickly as possible and just wanted to thank you all for doing your research and supporting our project.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, appreciate it. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Staff comments? Nothing? Okay. Treasurer's not here. Christine's not here.
Not here.
Council comments?
Yes, I do. I would like to announce three of our own receiving awards from the Capitola Chamber of Commerce. The first being our own John Barisoni's Man of the Year. To Elise, who runs our Recreation Department, Woman of the Year, quiet, competent, and remarkable individual, so she deserves a hand. And last but not least, I know he's not here, hopefully he's got nothing better to do than to watch this show, but Charlie Howard, the inimitable Charlie Howard, Lifetime Achievement Award, been around longer than the city, so, well done Charlie if you're home. Do something else, turn the TV off.
One more?
Mr. Mayor, I did realize that we, we wanted to announce that we did receive the shipment of the new, um, single space meters for Capitola Ave. We should have them installed, if they're not installed already, very shortly, so the situation where we haven't had parking meters out here in front of Capitola Ave, which has really given some of our businesses fits, should be solved quite soon and they will take credit cards as well.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jamie. I'm going to rearrange the agenda right now and I'm going to move, um, item 9A up in front of the boards and commissions election. So, we're going to address, um, item 9A, which is approval modification to a general event permit for fireworks show by Monte Foundation in the city of Capitola.
I just had one quick oral communication again. Just a quick reminder that there's a new show at the museum that'll be opening on Saturday, March 21st at noon, with a grand opening with, uh, refreshments and so forth, it'd be a wonderful exhibit. And we're looking for more volunteers from, for the museum, so if any of you are interested in volunteering a couple hours a month, it's a fun job. We're having a little pre-opening this Saturday, so if you're interested, give me a call or come on down to the museum this Saturday and we'll talk to you about becoming a volunteer.
Staff report on the Marmonti fireworks?
No, no, we're good. Rudy's got it here.
(inaudible).
There's a bigger gun. Good evening Mayor, Council. Rudy Escalante, your Chief of Police. So as you know, in 2014, we were approached by the Monte Foundation regarding having their fireworks show, a new general event in Capitola, which occurred in, uh, 2014, on Saturday, October 11th. And based on the review process, based on the city policy, this was a new general event, so it came before the council. We had a public hearing regarding that and the special event permit was approved. This year, the Monte Foundation would like to have the event again and they are looking in October as well. And since it's going to be a change in the date, moving from a Saturday to a Sunday, they're proposing a, on a three-day weekend in October, this requires a change in their special event. And so part of our policy is that we have to bring this to council anytime there's a change in a special event that is, is serious in nature in that it's going to change the date and the traffic patterns, which will kind of remain the same, but at least will give our public an opportunity to engage in the process. And so the Monte Foundation has done fireworks shows for eighteen-plus years now in the Santa Cruz County area. And they help raise funds and last year's event helped raise funds for the skate park at McGregor Property. Last year, the fireworks were shot off of the wharf and we didn't have any issues within the city, we had to close the wharf that day. We, uh, obviously for fire reasons, the gas was turned off and we had to close the wharf for a period of time through the morning as well, early on, so that they could do the setup. We mirrored the traffic pattern that we use for the wharf to wharf and we actually took advantage of social media well in advance and repeatedly put that information out as to what the traffic pattern was. And then we felt like it was pretty successful. We, again, didn't have any problems that we were aware of. We had a couple of minor traffic issues, but nothing to the extent that would have caused a major problem for us. And so it was a really, really good event and in walking around the city afterwards and even recently talking to some folks, they were very excited to hear that there was another opportunity. We engaged with the Monte Foundation to go ahead and work with the BIA so that they could look at potential dates. Staff contacted the two tenants on the wharf and we were looking at Sunday, September, or October 11th, 2015. In talking to the tenants on the wharf, they have a couple of concerns. That is a three-day weekend and the day that the event would occur is right in the middle of that three-day weekend. Again, we would have to do a closure all day. Now, staff has looked at a potential use of a barge, a floating barge where we could actually shoot the fireworks off of a barge somewhere out in the water. We've also worked with the Monte Foundation to try and locate one. The nearest one that we could even get close to was somewhere up in San Francisco. So getting that down here is extremely costly. We're committed to continue to look, but at this point, the only opportunity or the only option is the wharf. So in talking with the tenants out on the wharf, I know that they're here today, they would like to at least voice their thoughts on the matter and with that, I'm ready to take any questions if there are.
Thank you Rudy.
Mm-hmm.
Seem to be any questions, thank you.
Okay.
Mark, would you like to address the council, please?
Oh, I have a question though, Chief. Chief, October 11th, just for the mayor's benefit, is the Columbus Day weekend?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all, that was the only question I had.
Is that a coincidence? Thank you, Mike.
So, thank you again for, for considering another Monte Foundation fireworks show. I, I would love to do a barge so that these gentlemen can, business can stay open. Like Rudy had said, the cost of getting one down here is more than what I would spend on the fireworks. Something we could discuss that I'm open to is should Capitola, if this is going to be an ongoing thing, which I would love to see it be an ongoing thing, for us building our own barge? And then you guys storing it for me and we bring it out once a year. I'm not saying that I would pay for that all by myself, but I am open for a discussion of a joint effort, even with the two business owners that affects their business, to go and build one. But now the other part of that is storage. I don't have any place to store it, the city would have to store it for me. But like I said, if it's an ongoing thing and we see this going on forever and you've got my commitment, as long as I'm above ground, it might be worth to look into. I don't know if we can build it before this year's show, but like I say, if this is something we're going to commit to each other on, let's look into building one. And then it's up to you, you know, you guys find the spot and all that and it's just up to me to, to build it. Okay? I'm more than happy to look into that. Any questions?
Yes, Mark, um, how are you going to promote this show?
Um, so, last year, we, we did media and some, some advertising. You know, I was kind of going off and hoping to see how, how we do it in Tahoe and that's the businesses, through the actual businesses who benefit, which obviously is the esplanade. And I was hoping that when they have their annual meeting, going to that annual meeting and kind of running by with them what the restaurants in Tahoe do, because that's kind of like the example we followed. You know, once again, the, the more money I get as sponsorships, the more advertising I can do. The reason why we didn't advertise more last year is because the sponsorship level from the actual businesses in Capitola was lower than what I had hoped it was. So I still, I mean, we, we did well for a first-year show, don't get me wrong, we did really well. I'm hoping to build on that. The advertising definitely is linked to how much money I get pledged, because I don't want to take money away from whatever we're trying to do in the community. And this year, Jamie and I had mentioned the tennis courts, which I'm more than happy to do because I know kids use the tennis courts and, you know, it's always about the kids. I'm on board helping with you guys, whatever projects you deem necessary. The advertising is something that's directly related, meaning the more money I get, the more advertising I do. But, in lieu of that, I felt like there wasn't, and it was my, and I'll take full blame for it, there wasn't ever a, a meeting that I appeared in front of all the businesses where I can say, hey, guys and girls, this is how it works in Tahoe, we've had tremendous, the numbers in Tahoe more than doubled from the first year to the second year. And one of the reasons was, we had that meeting in Tahoe late too. So I'm hoping this year to get in front of all of them, where, you know, it's just something, something as simple as them attaching, you know, an announcement to their menus a month out, because obviously it's, it's to get, you know, people in the restaurants and all of that. I will say that we had a great crowd and I was very pleased with how the traffic worked, I didn't think there was any problems. I think, yeah, there's more we can do to get more people, but it goes back to, what is the purpose of the event? Is it to jam it the way Seacliff got with a bunch of tourists, or is it to keep it local and have our local people be the ones that enjoy it? And I think we do a lot for the tourists, I'd like to have this day, you know, more for, for us in Capitola and Santa Cruz to enjoy. I understand what puts us over the top number-wise is when we get that tourist dollar from over the hill, but you know, what, what made Seacliff so unattainable towards the end was it got swamped with over-the-hill people. And I was hoping to avoid that, because I don't want you guys telling me we can't do it, the crowds are too big. So...
Thank you, good answer, Mark.
All right. Any other questions? I really appreciate it. I, I, you know, the show was amazing and I always go back to, it's not about the money, it's about standing on Capitola Beach and looking around and seeing all those little kids' faces light up with each shell and, um, I would do it if it was just for that. I would, to, to light up the sky and, and make the kids happy.
Thank you. Mike?
First of all, thank you, it went off without a hitch. Beautiful show. Could you approach your vendor, is there any opportunity for setting up on Hooper's Beach for the, you know, the ignition of the fireworks? It could be, we could actually close that beach.
Is that that, so if I'm looking out at the water, is that that area off to the left?
To the right.
Yeah, it would be the west beach, the western beach.
To the right, if you're looking down the end of the wharf, it's the right-hand beach.
All right, so, that is, that's, we can do it, it's going to change, I mean, I'll be honest, what, what, what made that show so beautiful was it, how the shells come in over...
Over the water.
And over the center. I, I won't say that that wouldn't change that effect.
It was just a thought, I don't know whether the tide, you know, the irregularity, the tide would change.
That has something to do, and then we have to have so many feet.
Yeah.
So what, so we would set up there and what, what you would do, would you'd be eliminating that, that other half of the beach to the left of the wharf. If you're looking, if you're looking out towards the water, it would not only be the right part that's closed down, you'd probably lose half because of the rules and how many shells, it's per, so many feet per, how many shells.
Oh, okay.
So you'd probably lose half the other beach. Now, once again, if, you know, if you guys saw, it was, I, I found it really amazing that most of the crowd did stay on, around the businesses on that part of the beach. I didn't know that there was a bunch of water covering a good portion of the other beach, I didn't know that until someone told me afterwards. If the crowd gets bigger, we're going to need that other part of the beach, is the only thing.
Okay, I didn't realize the regulations about the horizontal.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's per feet, by shell and all that. And, you know, we want a bigger show.
Yeah, of course.
So, any other questions?
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thanks.
Is there any other members the public would like to address us? Please step forward.
Mayor, Council, members of the staff, for benefit of the record, my name is Willie Case, I own the Wharf House Restaurant at the end of the wharf. Am I opposed to this project? Absolutely not. And I, I want to commend Mark and his foundation for the commitment that they've made to the youth of this community and, and this area. Do I have some concerns about it? Yes, I do. Being a businessperson on the wharf and, and on a wharf that has no parking and, and we have a myriad of problems during a course of an entire year. Our year is pretty much comprised of that that happens between April and October. And, um, I, I really wish that this is a project that I certainly want to see it continue, but I wish it was a project that maybe we could analyze a little bit further and maybe have it at, at a time when Frank and myself's businesses are not in our primary time, you know, our, um, once we get into the winter months and paying our rent, we do, it's, you know, we, we need that, that period of the year that, that we can make our, make our nut, so to speak, for the, the year and, uh, by putting this project right in the middle of a three-day weekend, I mean, wow, I mean, that, that really, that really does hurt us and, and it's our, it's our time of the year. This is when we make our, our, like I say, nut. I wish that we could take a look at that, I, as a matter of fact, I sat today and I didn't get a chance to talk to you, Mark, about this or Rudy, Rudy either, but, uh, I spoke with a friend of mine that's the Commodore of the yacht club in Sausalito, they put on a very large fireworks show there and they do it on a barge. And I got the information of the contact people there and I, I just, uh, Chief alluded to the fact that it's pretty expensive to bring a barge, I guess from northern, further north California here. And I really don't know what that expense might entail, but, uh, it'd certainly be, maybe worthy of being looked at. I, I don't know how you move a barge, I don't know, do you put it upside down or over the side of something or what, but, um, I think that there's some alternatives to look at with this project. And, uh, like I say, uh, my business is, will always be in support of what's going on in the community, that's just the way we are. Anyway, I think that, just for the record, I'd, I'd like, uh, the, the council to understand that we, we would like to have this looked at a little deeper for further, for their use, for further years of this project. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address it.
Willie, just, what does Santa Cruz use for their fireworks?
I'm sorry?
What does Santa Cruz use for their fireworks? They use a barge or do they do anything?
They fire it on the beach.
No, they do, they, they fire theirs off on the beach. And, and I've kind of always wondered why we couldn't do that as well here, but, uh, you know, I, uh, just to give you some background on myself, I was a power technician at one time and, and fired probably eight or ten of these fireworks shows and, uh, so I, I know the, the logistics to doing it, but I'll tell you what, after seeing what Mark brought out on the wharf last year, wow, you know, what I did was archaic. The computerized equipment and everything that they're doing this with today, but I, I just think that because of that, you know, there's probably alternative ways that maybe we could take a look at, at doing this. I had one of the thought and I lost my train of thought. In any event, um, we, we would like to maybe have the council consider maybe compensating us a little differently. I know that, you know, this past year, I think, uh, the staff knocked, uh, some money off of our rent for, I, I, I think that maybe, because we, we not only lose our, our, what we normally do in the course of business on that day, but we lose what the rest of the community is going to gain by, by, by this project. I mean, we, it'd be nice to have not only what we do, but that little extra punch that you get from a great project like this. So we lose that too. And, uh, I, I think that Frank and I would maybe like to have you maybe reconsider what maybe you do for us, uh, for our loss of income on that. I, I always pay my employees, I mean, they, they, you know, it's not their fault for having a fireworks show, I mean, I, I, my people are very important to me, they're the biggest asset that I have. And, um, so, but, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out, maybe, maybe a month's rent, throwback or something like that, let's give it a thought, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's always something for you to say, Frank.
My name's Frank Ely, I do have a bait and tackle shop out there and the boats. Yeah, I really like the fireworks, we're not condemning that at all. What I am condemning is where it's done. And it's just, we're losing, okay? Everybody else is gaining a little bit, but all of a sudden we're losing. My people, they're out of work for a day and a, and a portion, uh, it's not fair to them, so I have to pay them, that comes out of my pocket. We lose approximate revenue that's in the thousands and it's not two or three, it's, it goes higher. If we were able to have that business open at nighttime while the fireworks were going off, we would double our business for the entire day. And we're talking eight to $10,000, I'm saying. But, uh, that's money part. We do want this to go on, we really do. I, you know, I love Capitola, I mean, I, there's nothing I won't do for the city, but this is just a little too much, I think we need, need to find another way to do this. There's got to be something we can do. And I'm hoping that we can find that, by meetings or whatever, but, uh, come up with some ideas. That's all I can say, because Willie did a good job, he said everything else, I feel.
I got a question for you, Frank.
Sure.
Could you use a barge? If, if we were to actually put one in through the summer, is there a use for it out there?
Uh, liability on it, that's the only thing I'd have to look into.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, insurance, liability, they used to have one, I mean, you do remember that.
Yeah, swimming barge.
Yeah, because we were kids and we'd go out on it and fish and, you know, it was always fun. But nowadays, of course, with the lawsuits and everybody wants to get money hungry quick, uh, I don't know, we'll have to look into that. That's something we need to talk about.
Some answer, we could keep it in the water through summer and through October, we, we can't leave it up in the wintertime.
No.
Pull it out during the winter.
No, we'd have to pull it, yeah, exactly.
You couldn't leave it on the water during the winter.
No, because you don't want enough growth on it that we can't, we couldn't lift it up with a crane?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we gotta have, we're going to have to do that.
It'll probably have to be in sections then. Well, we can discuss this later, but I, I think that we should pursue this conversation.
Exactly, that's what we need to do, because we might be able to do a sections on those, it's very possible.
Okay.
Yeah, just like...
You know, I didn't think it would, it would enhance the wharf itself to have it attached to the wharf for their usage during the summer when they have the boats in and out. I think, you know, in Tahoe, they, they actually set a bar up on it and, you know, for, for, but I don't know if you'd want to go that far, but, um, there is usage for it during the summer.
Just got Willie's attention.
But during the winter, it definitely cannot be on the water, because you know, if a storm comes, we don't want it to get weighed in.
Yeah, we've seen that happen.
That's why we don't have any boats in the marina after September.
Well, let's, it's not going to happen this year, but let's, let's, let's make discussion of this and, uh...
We should, we do need to...
Maybe Steve Jesper, we put everything on his shoulders is another one we can have.
And I'll go over with, with the fireworks... And I'll go over with, with the fireworks guys, I will go over their thoughts of launching from the beach.
Can you come up to the microphone? Because there's thousands of people at home that are dying to know what you've been saying. So just repeat what you said.
So, so two things, I will, we will definitely pursue the barge. The second thing is, I will go over, when the fireworks guys come out for a meeting, I will go over other venues of firing from the beach and look into firing. It's all about losing the space on the beach. And, but I understand about, if we can do it and not lose that much, we, we can do, you know, we can do it. When we first started talking about this, I was thinking of the area, if you're looking out to the water, to the left of Britannia Arms. That cement area right there? I was thinking of that area, firing from that location.
Pretty much a lot of public in that area.
Well, we would have to shut, that's the thing though, one more time, we would have to shut that down. Rudy would have to give me some more police to shut that area down. No matter where we do it on the beach, we're talking about shutting an area down, which, just to let you know, that kicks in the Coastal Commission, because then you're shutting down beach. And they don't like that, so.
You know, many, many years ago, we did use a barge, and it probably was more, it probably was affordable then, but we used a barge originally from, I mean, the company brought it. I don't know where it was from. Too bad Mick's not here, he could, he could answer that question, but, but I remember that. And I think it did come from the Bay Area or somewhere around.
They used to have one at Moss Landing, so I think that's where that barge originated.
I wonder if there's another one in Monterey Bay?
We've looked, we have looked, trust me, we have.
Monterey doesn't have one?
Because the show is so much better from the, for the same reason why it was better from the wharf into the wharf, it is even better with a barge. So as good a show as we saw, we see a better show with a barge. And, and let alone if we could get two, two, you know, barges that come apart, that's even better, because then we put one piece over there and one piece over there, and then we'll see a show that Santa Cruz has never seen. But it's, 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 like I say, we can do it, it's totally doable to build it, and you're not talking about that big, so.
The Port District has some surplus ones we can use.
I've looked, I'm telling you, I've looked every place. I've wanted a barge since I started. I, I did, but it was never cost-effective. But I've never had the partnership, like I say, if we make a partnership and I know I'm doing this for the next 30 years, then that makes it more cost-effective to also look into helping people build it and become sponsors. We could put, you know, their names on the barge, so on and so forth. Then it makes it a different scenario. You know, with the state, I never knew if I was gonna be there or not. So with, with you guys, I hope that we build a, you know, a long-lasting relationship. Okay? So, but I'd like to see a vote, because I need to start my permit process is, is the other thing. I have Coastal Commission and everybody breathing down my neck, are you gonna do the show or not? Can we, bless you, can we at least get a vote and then with the vote, just say we will look into other avenues so I can get started on my permits and such? I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mark.
Question, Mark, before you say that, a quick question. Just humor me, what is the, what's the expected cost of bringing a barge here?
The last time I got, in fact, Kim, Kim, my assistant, just got a quote. It was like $34,000 to get the barge that we found in San Francisco.
That's delivered here and taken back?
And taken back.
All right, thanks.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, or any other members of the public who'd like to address us on this issue? Okay, we'll turn this issue to council. Michael?
I like the idea of the USS Capitola. I think a new barge would be great. I think someone who has contacts with the Coast Guard or the US Navy, I think we, as a city, we might reach out to them. You never can tell what they, what our government could do for, do to us for free, I mean, do for us for free. And Mr. City Manager, I suspect our wharf, and we ask this every year, is insured for fire slash fireworks. That's good. I think that we should go forward this year and approve this permit, but start immediately, if not for this year, for next year, for the barge effort.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
What about another, second, what about another weekend? I mean, that weekend doesn't work for, for the businesses at all. And, you know, I think it'd be just as successful on another weekend.
I, I asked the businesses.
It's a discussion between us now.
The business, the businesses, I mean, that was the weekend they came up with, because we've, we didn't wanna have it on a Saturday like we did last time. We wanna have it on a Sunday. That's about at the fringe of the season.
What about the following weekend?
You, you start getting in, when you start getting late October, you start climate change. It seems like it's the first two weeks in, in, in October, and so we could be pushing the limit there.
It can also be eighty degrees and beautiful and hot all October. We've had gorgeous Octobers.
December this, this year, but, but that usually is the fringe on that weather pattern. But if, if it's already been agreed, and you've discussed this with, with the businesses there, that seems to be.
They're the ones who told me that weekend. I didn't tell them.
Okay.
I didn't.
Okay. Jamie, I have a question for you. Right now, I think with, with both of these groups, the owners on the wharf of businesses, that we do defer rent for certain months, is that correct?
Yes, pursuant to the lease. I know that Frank certainly has a month, several months of rent forgiveness. Do we have the same thing with the Wharf House?
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, we don't. Just, just about four months.
So what is, what is the, what'd be the cost, I know maybe you can answer this right, what'd be the cost to the city to defer their rent for that one month? The whole month of October for both businesses?
You know, I don't have that figure off the top of my head. They may be able to give it to me a little bit more accurately. I, I think it's in the order of eight, $8,000.
$8,000? Okay. We, we have a motion of seconds, is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, Mark, I wanna say, last year when you came to us, we were very skeptical, and I think you remember that. And there were a lot of concerns about the safety, the, how it was gonna affect the public, and, and as Mike already said, it was a complete success last year. So this is an event that the city of Capitola, the residents of Capitola like, the challenge for you is, is working out that compromise with the business owners, and I think you've got it down to two. So that's, you're definitely making progress, and it's something, you know, I think we believe we wanna be part of this for the long term also. So I, I think, I think everybody in the room believes that. It's just coming up with that right solution that, that's gonna make everybody, I'm not trying to make everybody smile, because we can't do that, okay? That's not gonna happen, but we can, you know, maybe ease the pain, okay? It's, that's what I wanna feel. I know we, we try to make an effort with the, with the boat business, and with the four months, we let the, the rent go, so we're, we're already making some effort there. You know, what we do with the Wharf House, how we appease that, I'm not sure. My feeling right now is there's a motion of second. I'm in favor of moving forward with it this year, because I don't wanna throw a wrench into the plan. I want them to plan for the, for, for this. If we're gonna look at this as something we're gonna do ongoing, we don't want the two of you here every year raising the same concern, okay? So I'd like to see us somehow commit to talking about it for 2016, how we're gonna deal with it, and, and what we can do in the meantime, or what Mark's willing to do. I know there was some compensation that was paid last year. Whether it was enough, probably not. Nobody ever gets everything they want, okay? I know that the city benefited with a huge donation to, to the kids, and he's prepared to make another donation to the kids, so it puts us in a pretty enviable position, because, you know, we're not taking the money ourselves, but it's, it's all for a great cause, it's a great event, it's, it's one of the only things we do with nobody's against. So I'm committed to trying to make some agreement, you know, have, get involved in if it takes it, to work out something so it works going down the road. But for this year, I think we need to move forward, and I'm gonna support the motion.
I don't know what big rush is about this year. I mean, it's a nice event. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not really, it's not a tradition yet, and so we're not sure it was, but I'd certainly be happy to forgive their rent for October as, you know, I don't think it's that, I don't think they're, you know, they pay a lot, I don't think they're taking in as much. But I think that would be fair. That would be, you know, for them, if they're agreeable to that, I'd be happy, changing the date would be the first thing that would be better, but, you know, so that it wouldn't affect them. But other than that, we could talk about that.
So are you suggesting that as a friendly amendment to the motion?
Yeah.
It's up to you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, before you get on, on that track, I do wanna let you know that this previous year, I believe, between the two businesses, between payments made from the foundation directly and rent forgiveness that we offer as a city, I think the total payments were in the order of $4,500.
Already?
This last year, yes. That's what we did this last year.
So we can, we, I would accept a friendly amendment if we did that as opposed to the $4,500, but not in addition to?
No, I would only do it in addition to it, because they're, that was, that's, that's in, isn't that in lieu of their, of their winter, some of their winter rent?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, no, that wasn't in lieu of any other lease specified rent forgiveness. This was in addition to.
So I'm trying to dou, I'm doubling that from last year, basically.
Go over that again.
So pursuant to the boat and bait shops existing lease, they have a rent forgiveness for four months during the winter. This year, in addition, between the Monti Foundation, who wrote, wrote direct checks to the businesses and staff, we, we forgave, I believe it was $1,500 for the Wharf House and $1,000 boat and bait, so the total payment to the two businesses was, I believe, $4,500 to offset the impacts of this last year's fireworks show.
Okay.
Oh, now, we're talking about forgiving, you know, $8,000 worth, which we're doubling up on what we did last year, which I think is a good effort.
So we, we remove the.
Is that okay?
The previous stipends, take those away, and just, we're just gonna give them both one month's free rent?
One free month's rent for each business.
So you, you don't have to contribute then, Mark, on that, and then the city?
Now, I wanna make it clear.
He has to come to the microphone, he's gonna speak, but it's still due time between the council members. We need to finish our.
Sorry, I always feel like I have such a loud voice.
Finish our discussion first, I think.
It was not the Monti Foundation that wrote a check. I wrote the two gentlemen a check directly, myself, as a thank you for closing. I didn't feel, I didn't feel it right to take it from the project we were raising money from, so I wrote a personal check to the two of them, as a way of telling them, thank you for closing.
Thank you, Mark. So Stephanie, your, your, your motion includes that we give them one month's free rent for both businesses. Mike, you okay with that?
That's a total of $8,000, Mr. City Manager?
No. Roughly.
Roughly, okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have their, their monthly rent figures off the top of my head.
That's okay, it's not, it's not $14,000.
I don't believe it.
Okay, fine.
And, and the wording would be to forgive their rent for the month or something like that.
Okay.
Not give, but.
Okay, so Sue, do you understand the motion? Okay. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everybody okay?
You know, if we keep on giving Frank free rent, he's gonna, we're gonna have to wind up paying him. I think that's what we're moving towards, I don't know, just saying.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go on with the general government, public hearing section, and right now, we're going to a presentation regarding the Santa Cruz Metro Transit District. Alex Clifford, CEO, thank you for joining us.
Mayor, city council members, thank you so much for allowing us to present to you today. We're just gonna give you a little bit of a snapshot of what our board has been seeing over the past several months, going back to August of 2014, show you a little bit about our structural deficit and what we're trying to do to begin to resolve that. So with that introduction, we're gonna have several team members change in and change out, and I'll start off with Angela, Head of our Finance.
Good evening, Angela Aiken, Finance Manager at Santa Cruz Metro. Thanks for inviting us tonight. So the very first slide I wanna go over is definition of a structural deficit.
Can you put the microphone down a little bit, please? Sorry. Network, okay.
Definition of a structural deficit is that your reoccurring expenses exceed your reoccurring revenue. Some of the major overview pieces that we've had within our budget, which I'm sure you've seen within your own, are personnel expenses, increased costs of goods and services, and again, recurring revenues not keeping up with recurring expenses. How do we get here and where are we going? Some of the historical factors that have come into us is the prolonged recession, which I know we've all experienced from 2007 to basically today. Between 2008, 2010, we had a lot of the unemployment affect us, and when unemployment affects you, that affects your sales tax, because people aren't buying cars and TVs and things that are taxable. Between 11 and now, we've had marginal sales tax growth, because people have gotten their jobs back, but not to the level that they had in 2007. So some of the things that we've done to balance our budget, I have that up there, we've reduced our fixed route service. At that time, we did not reduce Paracruz service in 2010 and 2011, when we reduced our fixed route service. We did fare restructuring, we increased our fares by 50 cents in 2011. We've been reducing our budget expenditures. We've delayed filling funded positions. We've had many positions that are open for a couple of years now that we have not filled, and we've done that on purpose to save some money, or at least extend our dollars that we have. And we've increased, the, the thing that we have done in our operating budget, we've increased the use of capital funds that we should be using on a capital budget, but we've been able to put them in our operating budget to balance. And then we've also used reserves to balance our operating budget. So this chart is, kinda graphically shows you what has happened and what could have happened between 2007, at the height, before the recession happened, and where we are today. So if you add 3%, a minimal of 3% to every year since 2007, when, before the recession happened, we would have received approximately $26 million in sales tax revenues. Instead, the red line shows you what actually did happen to the sales tax revenue that came into Santa Cruz Metro, and we had to use $21.8 million of non-recurring money in our revenues, or our reserves. This chart, this chart shows you the CPI change for the same period of time, I believe it's 2007 through 2014, and it ranged somewhere between 2 and 3%. This shows you Santa Cruz Metro's expenses during that same timeframe. So the red line is where our expenses actually have happened, and when I'm projecting our expenses to be by 2019. The blue line shows you where the revenues are and where I'm projecting them to be. The, the black line in between is our structural deficit, and we have been backfilling that with our revenues and our one-time monies ever since.
So along this journey, our board asked us to reach out to our peer properties, that is, properties that have similar operations as we do, and to find out how they have handled this sort of post-economic downturn. And three of our peers responded, Concord, Oxnard, and Santa Barbara. And you can see on this chart what they've done in the way of surface reductions, fare increases, wage freezes, and use of reserves. With that, I'm gonna ask Eric to come up and talk a little bit about our peers and benchmarking.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as mentioned, we did reach out to our peers, and really what we wanted to do is see how we compared against them. So first, we had to identify who they were, and we went through some data from our National Transit Database to see what we can find, and we found that there is no transit property out there, just like Santa Cruz Metro. But there are a few that are close. Some are obvious, some not so obvious. Monterey City Transit is one of those obvious ones, they're just their neighbors to the south. But then other places like Champaign-Urbana may not seem like a peer, but they actually serve a similar student population that we do. They serve the University of Illinois, like we serve the University of California at Santa Cruz. So when we had our peers identified, we started looking at, see how we compared, and really two charts really sort of tell the story here. And the first is that our cost per revenue hour is the highest amongst our peers. It costs $163 per hour to be able to put service on the road, so every hour on the So every hour on the road is $163. Secondly, we looked at our subsidy, and that is after a rider comes in, they board with their $2 fare or they pay with their monthly pass, there's still a subsidy of $4.52 per ride. And we did a whole bunch of other benchmarking with these different performance indicators, and there are a few from Paracruz. I'll have April talk about those.
Okay, and we look at California for people who are our peers at Paracruz. Paracruz is kind of unique because we're directly operated. The transit district operates themselves. And they're not purchased transportation, which is the way most of the industry goes. And we found one, Paratransit, Inc. in Sacramento. In Nationals, we went out to look to see if we could find a couple more to compare to, and we found three more. And then you can see here that our cost per ride compared to our peers is pretty high. I want to say that there's a big difference between the high and the low here. The high one, they don't really care how much their rides cost because they have a sales tax initiative that's just for Paratransit. Whereas on the short end of it, they have special rides to the airport for 50 bucks a piece, which bolsters their price coming down.
So once we identified the structural deficit and then also benchmarked our performance against our peers, we really wanted to look internally first to see what we could do to decrease our expenses the best we could and make sure we're finding every penny out there that we can to see if we can solve this problem. But unfortunately, the gap is just too wide. And so we've been having these meetings throughout the county to really get feedback from the public regarding some concepts that we're going to be bringing to our board that would change service or change some fares. So the first one is looking at our Highway 17 Express service. So under this concept, we would look at increasing the fare from $5 to $7, and then making subsequent increases to the rest of the fare structure, as well as discontinuing our five-day pass and introducing a new 15-ride card for flexibility for our riders. We estimate that this would raise anywhere from $267,000 to $345,000 per year. That assumes a 5% to 10% decrease in ridership. It's pretty well-known in the transit world that when you increase fares, you're going to lose some riders along the way. The one exception to that is when we increased the Highway 17 fares back in 2010, five years ago, we went from $4 to $5, and ridership still went up. There's been incredible demand on this service. It's broken its own ridership records for the past four years running.
Okay, for the Paratransit side of it, we identified three operating efficiencies that we could do and two fare options. The first operating efficiency was to align the days and hours of Paratransit service to those of fixed route service, which is the minimum that ADA requires. Currently, Paracruz is open from 6:00 AM to 10:30 at night, and even longer along the major late-night corridors. And then the second operating efficiency that we came up with is aligning non-school term service to fixed route service. And this would affect the Felton and Lampico area, who, where the fixed route does not run when the school's out. And then the third one would be holiday service. Currently, we provide Paratransit on three holidays that fixed route doesn't run. Again, if fixed route doesn't run, we're not obligated to provide Paratransit. But for those three holidays, we do. We have been doing that. Then we have our fare structure option. The first one we have is premium fares. And that is to charge a higher fare rate for services that are over and above those required by the ADA. And that would be same-day rides, wheel-call returns, subscription rides, pickup and drop-offs outside of the service area. Our current service area is 3/4 of a mile around every fixed route, bus route, in a bubble kind of around them. And the last one is redistup patching a vehicle for a no-show when somebody's missed their ride and they need to return home when they ask for a second vehicle. And then we have, the other fare structure option is a full fare. And defined by the ADA, a full fare is the ability of Paratransit to charge twice the fare that it would take for somebody who is non-disabled to get from point A to point B. So if you were going from Boulder Creek, say, to Watsonville, and it took you three buses to get there, you would have paid $2 for each bus, a total of $6. And by rights, we could, under the ADA, charge $12 for the same ride. We have a flat rate of $4 that we've had for over 10, well, we've had a flat rate, basically, but the $4 is since 2011. So there's some examples of a tiered peer structure. You can see that the three agencies there don't actually double every, every bus ride, but it does allow for some extra income there. And the staff is asking the board to basically look at maybe having a mileage-based fare structure. And then Angela?
So Eric and April are taking you through the service side of it. So I'm going to walk you through the, how those service changes that we're proposing would affect the budget. So right now, our fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. And so we're putting together our 2016, 2007 multi-year budget. Right now, we have a $7.4 million structural deficit. And the things that Eric was talking about, that we've looked inside and we tried to find efficiencies within our budget that we have today, those could bring the budget down, the deficit down to about $3.8 million after two years. If we put into effect the Highway 17 fare restructure and we put into the Paratransit options that April talked about, we could bring that deficit down to $2.9 million at the end of the second year. So clearly, we're not, we do not get our deficit resolved in two years, and we know this. We know it's going to be a multi-year situation to finally resolve the budget. But those numbers that you see up there, those are recurring revenues that will continue to come in through the years. They're not one-time monies.
So in closing, the first bullet up there represents the process that we're basically concluding tonight, which is the public outreach process. We have spanned across the county in numerous public venues in order to receive public feedback, including for, now four city council meetings and a total of, I think, 12 that we've hit as of tonight. Now tomorrow, at the board meeting, metro board meeting, we will provide them information on the, what we've received in the way of feedback from stakeholders and customers and feedback that you give us tonight, and ask the board to allow us to take these concepts to a public hearing. So we haven't done a public hearing to this point. We've just been receiving feedback. And so we would ask the board to go to a public hearing. We would schedule that public hearing out about 60 days on April the 10th, and that would be the time when we would formally have a public hearing to formally consider those proposals for possible adoption. In between that time period, we have to provide our first draft budget to the Regional Transportation Commission. So what we will do is we will put together our budget, and we'll put together a balanced budget like we have every year, but we'll continue to reach into that pot of reserves and those capital-eligible dollars in order to balance the budget. So we won't use any of these concepts in that first draft budget. Then, after April 10th, if the board adopts some or all of these concepts, we'll go back in, revise that budget one more time, back out some reserves, back out hopefully some of that capital money, and replace it with the dollars we've talked about today, and adopt the final budget in time for the new fiscal year, which starts July 1. Finally, in the way of public outreach, through this process, we've encouraged customers and stakeholders to communicate with us, that they don't necessarily have to come to a city council meeting or one of our public workshops or even our meeting tomorrow to be heard and to be counted. They can simply make sure that they communicate to us so that we can let the board know what their thoughts are. Various mechanisms to do that are shown here. Mr. Mayor, council members, we're now at your disposal to answer any questions.
You don't happen to have a slide showing the benchmarked city salaries versus ours?
I don't have a slide showing that.
What's been your experience? Have you done any research in that?
We, we, we do know that in comparison to other cities, our operators are paid, sort of, if I can use quartiles, in the upper quartile compared to other cities across the nation.
One thing that's glaring. Second, this come on the heels of major construction project that the metro has undergone. How does that wash with reserves and budget and what we're building?
Sure. What we're building and hopefully completing this year is our new operations center. As you may know, we're up on Dubois in the city of Santa Cruz with a temporary facility. That is a major undertaking for us. It was planned over the course of many years. It's a good example of why you need capital dollars in order to take care of projects like that. My next challenge becomes a challenge around our fiscal year FY '17, in which in that timeframe, I need to look at buying somewhere around 38 buses. Now, our buses have a life expectancy of about 12 years. Those 38 buses will cost the agency about $22 million to purchase. If I don't have capital-eligible money, money that we're using in the operating fund today, it's going to be very difficult for me to figure out how to buy those buses, unless some new grant money starts falling out of the sky from the state or the federal government. And if you've been watching what's going on there, that's probably not a likely opportunity.
How did we pay for the new transit center?
The transit center was cobbled together a number of funds, including state transportation funds and also state bond funds and a little bit of federal money put together there. Actually, it's about six or seven funding sources to put that together.
Do you perceive a higher operating cost with the newer, larger facility?
Well, certainly, there will be. It is a larger facility, so things like electricity-
Is that impacting your budget shortfall?
It, it's a factor that we put in there. It's not necessarily significant. It is a newer facility, so that it was designed with a lot more of, sort of, the efficiencies that are available to you today.
And I can assume that in the, in the view of this grim budget projection, that Capitola might be experiencing even fewer, I can't imagine how, but fewer or less bus service than we already experience? Our bus depot at the mall notwithstanding.
So two things on that issue. In this round, we're not proposing any changes to service. Now, as Angela indicated, this is a multi-year approach to fix this. So service will be looked at in, over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, if the board approves some funding for me next year to do a system-wide restructure. Now, that's a technical term, but let me just explain to you real briefly what that means. That means that we have a company come in and help us look at our system and where our routes go and where there may, over the last two decades or so, have been some shifting locations where people board and shifting locations where people are headed to destinations. See, we haven't done a system-wide restructure in over 20 years. You need to do them more frequently. Because things change. Development occurs, and your boarding and lightings can move around. So I think the hope for you in that vein is that when we do that kind of a look at our system, we might discover that there are some new opportunities in your city.
Forgive me for being critical, but you may find that there's no one riding the bus in Capitola because they can't find them.
Well, and we need to learn about that and resolve that. We surely do. But not be resigned to it.
Quite frankly, I haven't thought about the transportation service that you provide. I see the buses go around the neighborhoods and wherever I am in Santa Cruz. But I also see Lifeline going around. So I didn't see on the list of comparables anything about Lifeline. As far as I know, supplies pretty much the same service. Can you explain that to me?
They are a very different service, and my expert, April, will tell you a little bit about that.
Also, the real expert from Lifeline is here also. He's the guy that's running it. But Lifeline is a nonprofit also, like we are. But they, a lot of their grants are predicated on income, people's incomes. And so a lot of their services are given to people with lower incomes. And so we, we're not allowed to ask any of that kind of information or anything. And so the cost of our rides that we have, we have to fulfill the demand that ADA says we have to. Whereas Lifeline, I believe, they probably have a little bit more control over the number of rides that they perform because they have a different, no?
Let's, 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 we don't need to go to the conversation.
Okay.
I think maybe we should invite Community Bridges to come and discuss their programs, and they can explain Lifeline for us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, though. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You know, I did have a follow-up question. If you do cut your services, which it seems like that's the direction you're going into, who's going to take it up? And, you know, we have Lifeline here, so do you see them as a viable alternative to your services?
Well, I don't know that, that answer. I don't, if you're talking about on the Paracruz side, there probably are some opportunities on those days that we pointed out, like holidays and whatnot, where we drop out of service, where folks that qualify for Lifeline could potentially take those services. But, see, here's, here's the thing about our Paratransit. We have prided ourself on the fact that we go up and beyond the ADA law, the minimum. We, we think that's something to be proud of. But times are tough, and we are one of the most expensive services, especially compared to our peers. We have a structural deficit, and, and what we're proposing is that we need to bring that back closer to what the federal minimum is, at least for this time period, in order to try to bring our expenses back in line and try to deal with our structural deficit. Again, it's a multifaceted approach, so we're not trying to take it all out on the Paratransit side. There's some Highway 17 impacts, obviously. And next year, we'll be back with more, likely will impact more of our fixed route riders.
I, I took it upon myself to seek out some riders from the, excuse me, some drivers from Paratransit. And so I asked, "What is the exceeding on the ADA?" And I was told, "Help a passenger get in a wheelchair. Help a passenger get out of the bus. Help a passenger to get into the office or wherever they're going." Is that what you're saying? You're going to discontinue?
No. I think what you're referencing is our door-to-door service. So you can have two approaches. You can have what's called door-to-door. So you're taking the person from their home to the van or the shuttle, and then vice versa at the other end. Or you can have curb service, in which you're dropping them off at the curb, and then they find their way from the curb to home. We have always had door-to-door service. Now, the only thing that we're proposing to change there is to have the opportunity that if the customer wants to be let off at the curb, that we will abide by their desire and let them off at the curb. By policy today, we take them all the way to the door, door-to-door.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, just out of curiosity, what union represents the drivers for Paracruz?
UTU. UTU are smart, as they are now.
Is that the same union that represents Lifeline?
I don't know that. Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the rate the same?
The, I don't know the-
Pay rate?
I don't know what their operators are paid. I do not know that answer.
Okay. Yeah, I'd kind of like to know that. Thanks.
I have no questions. I'm your representative for Metro, and this is an operation that was Ron Graves held for many years. And I'm just filling in and getting abreast of what's going on. So a lot of this is new to me also. But thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough.
Thank you.
No questions right now. I served on the Transit District for five years. And one of my most valued possessions in the whole wide world is my free bus pass that I have, that I do use. As a senior, I can ride free on the buses forever. And to me, I'm so excited to have that, and I'm glad you have that. Thank you for being kind to the previous board members by giving us a pass.
We, we thank you-
Sometimes I pay because I know you need the money. So, and sometimes I use it.
We, we thank you for your continued ridership, but you're not helping our structural deficit.
I know. I do both.
I knew it was Stephanie's fault.
Alex, thank you for bringing your staff in to join us. My concern has always been Capitola and our share, our equitable share in this thing. And now we had, had watched you over.
I got your back, okay.
We will, we will be burning his ears. Thank you very much.
And you are on our unmet needs, so you are on that list.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank all of you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
We now move to the report regarding the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Dennis, I think, do we have any public, other public comment on that, or?
Oh, excuse me. Is there any public comment that would like to address? Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward. I'll just jump in.
Hi, council. How are you? Ray Cancino, CEO for Community Bridges. Thank you, Stephanie, for joining us at Meals on Wheels at our event.
It was great.
It was great to have you. So first, you know, some of the things that you saw earlier is a 40% increase in cost in fares for '17. It's on the backs of commuters. It's on the backs of the elderly and disabled, ADA. You know what that is, right? It's American Disability Act. So it's all our elders in our community, people with fixed incomes, inability to basically make that, that pay change. Secondly, I think that the proposal itself glosses over the reality that we're all facing in this community, including the reduction of personnel services and personnel expenses. Recommendations similar to other people in their presentation, like wage freezes, would also help their structural deficit. So I look forward to them to also include longevity, split shifts, bilingual differentials, or anything else. Now, it shouldn't come on the back of the employees either. So that also speaks to the administration. And I really challenge them to consider thoughtfully about some form of freeze or reduction. Earlier, we were talking about what is the difference? Well, our drivers start at, basically, almost close to minimum wage. They stop, they start at 12:34, and because we're UTU, we're exempt out of some of the living standard wages, but we're really always trying to raise that up, and it's really difficult as a nonprofit to meet that standard. So lastly, I think that the fares could do so incrementally. I don't think it needs to happen right away. I really feel like it needs to be a mixed strategy. It has to be both on the membership and the ridership, but there has to be something equal. And what we're seeing tonight is basically just on ridership. I think that's unfair. I think that's unwise, and I think that it's for further consideration. So, you know, tonight, I sent you guys an email, basically drafting out kind of my viewpoints on some of these proposals. And it's the first time that I'm going to be speaking to Lifeline or speaking to our situation. Fiscal year 1516 is going to be tough for Community Bridges. It's going to be tough for Lifeline. And the first cut that needs to happen is going to be a cut for me. So I'm freezing my salary 1516. I challenged staff at Metro to consider that, doing that as well. I'm, last year, I dedicated 1% of my salary back to Community Bridges. This year, I'm going to double it by 2%. And it's the first time I'm doing this publicly, but I think it's something that's telling and that has to be considered, and it's irresponsible not to do so. I'm not going to do this on the back of the elders, people in our community, and people living here in Capitola and across our county. So I really challenge everyone at staff to really consider that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this issue? Okay. We'll move to, on a general, general discussion.
Do we want to give direction at all to our representative or, are you discussing this tomorrow?
We have a meeting tomorrow. Are we just supposed to accept the report or the presentation?
We're just accepting the report, and I think that we've, I think that, you know, Councilman Robotor has heard the comments. And I would add that, and not to, not to be stereotypical regarding bus ridership, but very often, the riders on the buses are the ones that can lease a- can least afford paying more. And anyone who's familiar with the system realizes that the fares are the smallest part of the infill for the, you know, we saw the kind of savings in the thousands, and yet we have millions in structural deficit. So I think hard decisions have to be made, and I'm sure you'll bring them forward.
Yeah, I think it's one of those cases where everything needs to be looked at, everything.
I believe, I believe that's what the agency is doing now, is across the board, looking at every item. These are just the ones that are coming up first and foremost, and I, I believe everything's on the table throughout the rest of this year.
Yeah, I mean, they've certainly been through that before, and it's not the first time that this agency's and others have been through that, where they, they have to tighten their belts a little bit.
Right. I, I think they're heading in the right direction, it's just a big process, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we may have missed the consent agenda, and...
I know, I'll go back to that.
Okay, sorry.
There's nothing on there that I...
Oh, okay, great.
He moved them up.
We're moving around.
I moved everybody up.
Okay, we're good, we're shifting around, I like it.
Okay.
You keep me awake.
Item C is report regarding Traffic and Parking Comi, Parking Commission. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item for you tonight is just a kind of a review of the Traffic and Parking Commission and its membership and purposes. So the commission was first formed in 2009, and its purpose, as stated in its formation resolution, is the, to develop short-term, short, medium, and long-term plans for city council consideration that address traffic and parking demands in the village by considering citywide traffic and parking improvements developed in various studies and reports provided to the city council. Once these plans are in place, the commission shall act as an advisor to the city council on implementation of plans, of these plans, or other duties as requested by the council. So in 2000, I'll get to the membership later. The council, the commission has filed a alternative parking plan with the council, included increasing the parking in the Paco properties. Most of that has been met. They were strongly involved in the implementation of the pay stations and have made recommendations to the council on several other projects, too. The current membership, the TPC, have kind of listed them, given who the current member is, and I know one of the concerns of council is, are we geographically spread throughout the city? We have two village residents, they need to be in the village, and those are, as you can see, the names there. There's a planning commissioner who lives in the Riverview neighborhood, two business owners, and they are specified as village business owners. Both of those are non-residents at this time. And then we have, each council member has their own appointee. You can see the neighborhoods there, so we do, through those appointees, bring in somebody from the Jewel Box and somebody from Cliffwood Heights, which kind of spreads us out outside of the village and Depot Hill area. I really don't have much more. I think tonight, we're looking for a review of the commission makeup, and if the council's interested in making changes to that, provide direction on projects that the council wants the commission to look at. One thing I do request is, before we make any changes, you request input from the current commissioners, they've been around, most of them have been on since 2009, and their next commission meeting is incorrectly stated in the staff report, it is not on March 11th, it's actually on March 18th. So that's my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Steve? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone like to address the council on this issue, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Steve Piercy, and I run the, I volunteer over at New Brighton Middle School for their bike club, as well as their monthly bike walk, skate to school events. So, as you know, the Parking and Traffic Commission is identifying pedestrian and bicycle issues throughout the city. However, the, we know what the composition is of the commission. It's of residents and business owners across the geographic locations, but we don't have any, any representation explicitly for people who walk or bike as part of their everyday transportation or their recreation. And an advocate for people who walk, bike, or use other modes of active transportation would give a voice to every person who does not drive due to age, too young, too old, disability, income, or by choice. With having some person who could be that representative, we'd have a broader perspective to bring more people, regardless of their mode of transportation, to the city of Capitola. The economic benefits from providing more infrastructure for people who walk and bike has been thoroughly researched from New York City to Seattle to San Francisco. For example, we know that, you know, 12 people who can park their bicycles in the space of one parking space would mean that there's 12 people shopping in the, in the village as opposed to four people who could fit inside the space of a car. It's also known that people who drive, although they spend more per visit, don't return as often as people who walk or bike, because these people live in the places where they're going and shopping. So even though the, the people who drive spend more per trip, people who walk or bike end up spending more over time because they go more often. Finally, let's see, the, I wanted to say that before we had Safe Road to School program, where we have the monthly events over at New Brighton, we had about 10% of students who were getting to school actively. Over the many years that we've been actively pursuing this, we're now up to 18%, and that was at our last monthly bike walk and school event. And that's also partly due to all of the infrastructure improvements that have been taking place. You know, more bike lanes, more education, and more encouragement for this. So the more attractive and comfortable we make it to walk and bike and skate and roll, the more likely people will choose to use those modes of active transportation. The cleaner our air, water, and earth, the healthier our minds and bodies, and the more money we have to spend on the things that really matter in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please step forward.
And there, there are members on that committee who are avid bicyclists and walkers and hikers, so they are, they are represented, they may not have made that as known as, as other people would know, but they're there.
Right, it's not explicitly, that's...
Not a seat.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay?
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
I thought you said so.
There are some members of the committee here, but we don't know what you're talking about, so I don't really have, I can't really comment because you haven't made any, you know, statements of any changes you're going to make or, or anything else, but we're here if you have any questions for us, but...
Mr. Mayor, while Karen's up there, I think there was some discussion on increasing the number of persons on the committee to represent further, you know, further outreaches from the village. And it's, it's pretty village-centric right now, even though there are residents in other areas, but do you think it would profit the committee to increase the number of members from the avenues, from, you know, Cliffwood Heights, from, you know, Jewel Box?
Well, of course, the larger the committee, the harder it is to make a quorum, because you start finding people that, you're sort of desperate to find representation from areas farther away, and those people say, well, yeah, okay, I'll do it, and then they don't necessarily show up at the meetings. So we have, on occasion, had, had trouble making a quorum, so I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of a larger membership. Personally, as a, as one of two village members out of the entire, a business representative out of the entire committee, I'd like to see another slot for another business person. That, that would be a change I would like to see, but if, the other possibility is that you actually restate, you know, the mission to, so that we're not really asked, you're not, we're not really asked for recommendations for changes on 41st Avenue, or, you know, up in the avenues in general, that we are, concentrate more on village parking and traffic. And then there wouldn't be quite such a feeling that we need to have representation, and we discussed the changes that were going to possibly be made on 38th Avenue with the, I think there was a bike grant a few years ago that we were possibly going to get and maybe do away with the parking on one side of the street, et cetera. Well, you know, in reality, with, for the makeup, you're right, that was really a little bit, you know, we weren't really representing the people who lived up there. We were only just being residents and having an opinion about somebody else's neighborhood. So perhaps the focus actually should be looked at, that it should just be, you know, parking and traffic in a certain radius of the village. I, I don't have a problem with people who don't live in the village being on the committee because they all are very interested in Capitola, and they would be interested in the village or probably they wouldn't volunteer for that committee. So I think it's appropriate to have people that don't necessarily live right down in the, in the village, per se, be on that committee. I think their, their, you know, input can be very valid. But I think if anything, rather than increasing the demographic of the committee, decreasing the, the area that we, that we're tasked with discussing might be another thought.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, my name's Nels Westman, I'm actually the Chair of your Traffic and Parking Commission. Like Karen, I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight because, quite honestly, I haven't the slightest idea what Jacques' issues are with the Traffic Commission, or, you know, how you want to modify our mission, or our structure, or anything else. It's completely up to you. We serve at your pleasure, we are your commission. But I, most of us have been working on it hard since 2009. Honestly, I think we've done a pretty good job from bringing forth the watery report, the whole concept of a parking structure, which is now, I think, enjoys broad support in the community. It is part of your general plan. The challenge is, how big is it going to be and how are we going to pay for it? But we are serious proponents of exploring that process and trying to get you, the city council, over, well, since 2009, to, you know, saddle up and get going on it. So please, at least afford us the courtesy of telling the commission what your issues are, and, you know, if we're, if we dropped the ball somewhere, tell us where it was. If you want to expand our mission, just give us our marching orders. From the outset, I always had the impression that you were most, for purposes of our work, you were most focused on the village and the areas immediately around the village. When, you know, it comes to making traffic recommendations for the mall or anything else, it seems like you always bring in consultants and experts and everything else whenever you're talking about 41st Avenue or the mall, because there are regional considerations there that, you know, we just don't have that much expertise, but most of the members of the commission are really pretty familiar with the village and a lot of history there and everything else, and we're just trying to help. So please, I mean, tell us what your problem is and let us work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nels. Please, come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember staff. My name is Richard Lippi, I live at 620 Monterey Avenue. I just have some brief questions regarding Traffic and Parking Commission. I think I'm in the right commission, anyway. Is it, is it true that there's a, that there's intent to put in bike lanes and cut half of the parking on Monterey Avenue? Let's say in the 600 block.
Steve, you want to answer that question?
We had discussion about it, I think.
Yeah, there's direction from council to look into that. There's no firm commitment one way or the other on that at this point.
Okay. I, I happen to know that there is a traffic study that's going on, they're counting cars at 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM from about Bay Avenue up to Kennedy. So is that, is that relating to this possibility of cutting the, the parking?
Continue your answer.
It's Caltrans, isn't it?
No, that is, we are actually doing some counts to see how many parking spots there are in that area and how they're being utilized in the off-season.
You're doing it on Caltrans Avenue, too?
No, we're just doing it on the Monterey. This is looking, we were, we are under direction to try and look at putting a bike lane along Monterey to tie into the McGregor Park.
Okay.
So we're looking at that.
Okay. So will this also be done in the busy season, when, you know, when...
Yes.
When the tourists come? Because as, as a volunteer directing traffic during the events, I send them up to Monterey Avenue.
No, yes.
Because that's...
Let's go back to the subject, it's actually, we're discussing the traffic.
Oh, isn't that traffic and parking?
It is, it's the commission, though, not, not the functions of the city. You're very welcome to call Steve and discuss this with him.
Okay, well, my question...
He'll give you more direction, because I, I don't think the council can help.
So do I sit, do I sit in Traffic and Parking Commission to find out more about this subject? Is that what I do?
If, if they're discussing that, you could.
That, that project, you know, really hasn't gone to the purview of the Traffic and Parking Commission. You call me directly, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for deliberation. Would you like to start out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off. Nels and Karen, there's been no statement on my part or intent to say that there's anything wrong with the commission as it's been operating. I think it's been doing a wonderful job. I sat in on the Blue Ribbon Committee. I did not choose to go to the Parking Commission. I think it's been doing great. So like that to rest. But I did bring it up because I think there's other areas of the city that do have traffic and parking issues. The first one that I thought about, which is now being put off for years, DeClares, and to try to involve the residents in that area about their concerns for the traffic calming there, but we also have other business areas of the city besides downtown Capitola, first of all, around Bay, 41st, you know, you mentioned 38th. So I think that I'd like to, my intent really was to get some direction from city council as to, you know, should we expand the commission? Should we ask the commission to look at other areas of the city, or look at the city in general? I like Molly's letter here, and that is to add a few members so that they could cover different areas of the city. So that's my intent, to get some direction from here and then bring it back to the commission itself. I fully think the commission should make up its mind how best to address this, and so in general, I'd like the commission to look at the rest of the city, look at other areas of business, and look at other areas of high congestion where parking and car transit is, you know, in competition. So basically, that's why I brought it up, and that's why it's here right now. Thank you.
Steve, what is the, the official designation of the Traffic and Parking Commission? Is it the Village Traffic and Parking Commission, or is it the Traffic and Parking Commission?
No, it is the Traffic, and it's not solely focused on, on the village. Certainly, that's where the majority, by the purpose statement, it was to address traffic and parking in, in the village was its primary goal, but it does have authority to look outside that area, and it has in the past.
I, I remember that when we formed this committee, it was really centered around issues that were in the village, and that's where we've led, we direct them to do it. But actually, in wording, it really should be called the Village Traffic and Circulation Committee, because that's what they address. So calling it the Traffic and Circulation Committee doesn't really apply as a city.
Well, they've looked at other issues. I mean, they've looked at DeClares 41st issue, they made recommendation to the council on that, they've, you know, so they have gone out, but certainly, its primary focus when it started was mainly parking in, in the village and how to address that.
Are we taking all traffic and parking issues to them now?
Um, not necessarily. We don't always take some of the parking issues to them, if they're outside the area and seem minor, but we could. You know, certainly, we were talking about the parking on Monterey, certainly that's something that's just starting to come up now, and I think we would take that to them as we went forward.
In the discussion of that, is, is that, is the makeup correct to, for this group to be addressing the whole city? In other words, it's true, it's non-balanced, it's really, it's really, their function as the Village Traffic and Parking Commission, this makeup is great, and it has been great, it's worked really well. is great. It has been great. It's worked really well for us. But if we have a Traffic and Parking Circulation Committee and we're addressing the whole city, it should be balanced out. There should be some way to, to make this equitable for, for all neighborhoods. No. So, okay.
But you know, we had that before and it was very parochial. And they ended up looking just at their own neighborhood. And when they all came together to look at the city, it really didn't work. They didn't really say, okay, you've got this problem. What can we do? Because if you solve that problem, then you might move it over there. And it just, it didn't, didn't really work very well, I don't think. I mean, we could certainly do that again. But I'd, I'd kind of like to, to have them have a discussion about, about where they think they've been effective or where they think they could be effective. I mean, it says short, medium, long-term plans. So we have some room there to, but you know, I think there's been some, there'd been a little bit of, of friction over the years because we didn't ask them their opinion on some things and we probably should have. So maybe it would be helpful for us to have, to formulate during the year when we have questions to bring that to that group so that we, they don't end up hearing about it later, you know, and maybe they would have some good input on that. But to, you know, give them a couple of things, a couple of tasks to look at, that, you know, questions that we, we would like some more information about that they can look into and bring, bring back to us or that they, you know, would bring on their own to, to bring to us that they think would be helpful. But they've, they've looked at a lot of things, haven't they?
Well, Karen's statement that, that we should add another merchant. Should that other merchant be a merchant outside of the village?
41st Avenue, perhaps?
Yeah. I mean, is, if we're talking about
That's not going to work, I don't think.
Well, why would you have representatives from the village or in the village proper who, who've done a very good job of doing what they're doing?
Because you have, because you
Make, make traffic decisions on the rest of the city. It doesn't, it doesn't
No, I know. I know. I think, I think it's best just to have a focused view of, of this group. I mean, to keep the focused view rather than, rather than turn it into, you know, the whole city. Because, you know, those, those problems are different. They're real different. And they, they, you know, we, I, but I agree with Jacques' point that when we do have a project like DeClairs, have, get the neighborhoods more involved because we, we could do a better job with that.
Well, maybe we should go back to, actually, this, this, this commission should be called the Village Traffic and Parking Commission. It finds their roles, it finds what, what they do and not, not address issues outside of the village unless they directly affect it with this, this commission.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to weigh in. I started on the Parking and Traffic Commission. First I want to do is I want to commend them for the work they do, okay? Can you go to the slide that shows the, the current members and where they're, where they located? Okay. When I started on this commission, it was a predominantly village commission. And the task of this commission at the time I joined was, was the council, and this is what the Parking Commission likes. They like to get direction from the council of what you want them to do. As Nels said, they serve at the will of, of the council. And we, when we were on the committee, we looked forward to doing something the council gave us direction to do. And at the time, it was, you know, come up with a plan for the parking structure and, and when the lower village lot came. Those were great projects. I don't think anybody on the commission ever felt that they were precluded from bringing any item to deal with traffic from anywhere in the city to the meeting. And we did that. I think when we brought up the Clairs project, that was something that came up. We talked about it. But the main focus, I think, from the people that were on that committee, and some people have been on that committee for many, many years, you know, things like the pay stations. It was primarily for traffic and circulation in the village. But when I go to this, when I look at this list now, I see a great cross-section. I see a jewel box rep, cliff wood heights. I say we're, we're more evenly represented now than I've ever seen that commission. So I don't see a need to add to it. I, Karen's point was well-made about too many people. You get a commission too big and it's hard to be productive. I think the important thing is, is if there is such a thing right now that is, that is, that we feel is, is a problem, you know, I still feel like I'd like to see a better, a shuttle bus or trolley system. That was one of the projects they were working on. It kind of, gaining momentum went away. But I mean, now with the two lots we have, the, the shuttle becomes more viable. And that program, I'd still like to see some alternative to that to make it better. But I think what I get from the members when I was there was this is, our job is to give them something to work on, you know. And I'd rather, if there is something, I don't know that there is something right now that's burning with us, if there's a burning issue. Like I said, I can't think of one right now. I, I was a little confused why this was on the agenda. But I know that if, if they did get a task, the minds on that commission, they've, they've got a lot of history in traffic and circulation issues and they give a lot of good thought.
Thank you.
Well, I could think of two issues. And one of them suggests that maybe we need a business person from the Bay Avenue. The roundabout, Capitola Avenue and Bay, and I think Clairs. So I think that there's a lot of issues in the city that we don't necessarily think about from an overall or a cohesive approach. I think the, the committee has cut its teeth on focusing on the espadon in downtown Capitola. I think they've developed expertise. They got a sense about how things work. I'd like to throw it back to the committee and say, okay, you focus on downtown Capitola, now what about the rest of the city? So should we expand? Should we add a few people, you know, to cover other perspectives? So that's my point. I think there are other things in the city that need to be addressed. 41st is an obvious one to me. 38th, there's a lot of things, including bike routes. The program, excuse me, the, the, the issue, I think, has expanded. And so I'd like to put it back to the, to the committee and have you chew on it for a while. You've done well downtown. You brought some issues that before we haven't thought about seriously. And I think that whole expertise, that whole viewpoint could start be used for the rest of the city. And so that's my point. I can't think of anything more. If the council would like to do that, basically, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the commission that they think about their mission, think about expanding it, come up with solutions that they feel or ways of approaching things in this city that they feel that they could take on. That may mean expanding it or not. I think Get is correct. The, the committee has expanded itself. I think a glaring thing is the merchants. I think merchants, more merchants from different parts of the city is very important. So that's my motion, that we throw it back to the committee and have them come up with a recommendation. It could be static. I don't, you know, I think it's up to them. They've been the ones that have been working on this for a long time. And so that's what I'd like, I propose.
I don't want to second the motion, but I think it's a great suggestion to them if they have any areas that they'd like to work on, to bring, to certainly bring those to us and to maybe work on a, a short work plan for this year. I don't know what's on their work plan, but maybe to make a little list of that and just check in with us, you know, see if we have anything else. The roundabout's going to be huge. That's going to be a very controversial issue. So we, we do need to involve, you know, lots of people in that, which we will. So maybe just have them continue their work and as we identify things, we'll bring those to them. And, I mean, I haven't appointed anybody on purpose because I wasn't sure what they were doing. And I wasn't going to say to somebody, you know, are you interested in, in talking about, you know, the village issues? Or if we were going to expand it to talk about anything? Frankly, I don't think anybody from 41st Avenue is going to want to go down and talk to the people in the village. I mean, they've got their own problems and issues and that's not a good use of their time to sit on that kind of a committee. And the people on Bay Avenue, they'll be interested in the roundabout, but they're not going to be interested in the circulation in the village. So that, you know, that's, that's, that's the only problem there. You get people that are just unfortunately interested in their, their own world, their own universe. So
Then, then I, I go back to, it should be called the Village, the Village Traffic and Circulation Commission because their interest is in the village. Every one of these representatives in some way is, is tied to it.
Yeah.
We don't have a bicycle person on this side. It's Karen. I mean, the makeup, the makeup is good. I like that people are on it. It's just the point is, is that the mission needs to be defined to, this is a village committee and that's what they do.
Then I would be willing to second Jacques' motion if it could be altered slightly. And that is that the Chair of the committee come back to us after their next meeting and report back on their take on our discussion tonight.
Okay. Okay. So okay with the maker?
Yep.
Okay.
That's basically my intent.
You okay with that, Stephanie? Okay. Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so carry. Put it back in your lap. Okay, we move to 835 Bay Avenue. Extension, extension request for conditional use permit for a temporary display of a model manufactured home and monument sign permit for a manufactured home business, Ideal Homes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is an extension of a request for a temporary mobile home display at 835 Bay Avenue. The site is located in the city's entry corridor, directly adjacent to the Bay Avenue exit off Highway 1. In the past reviews, the City Council has allowed the display of the mobile home on a temporary basis due to the location along the entry corridor. The City Council approved a one-year temporary conditional use permit in 2012. In 2013, the, the council reviewed the application for a permanent location and instead stated that they would like this to continue as a temporary use and extended the permit for two additional years as well as a temporary monument sign. There have been no code enforcement issues over the past two years. Before you this evening is an additional two-year extension request for the mobile home display. Also included in the request is a consideration for the temporary storage of vehicles for the, during the construction of the new Toyota dealership. This has been included with the current application to ensure no planning violations on the site. Toyota has been utilizing the site as part of their construction staging. They're requesting temporary storage until construction is completed, which is expected in May of this year. So three months. On this slide, you can see the mobile home display on the left and then the Toyota car storage is behind the mobile home display. The car storage is screened by a chain link fence with green mesh. The mobile home display is visible from Bay Avenue. This is an aerial identifying the two uses. The Toyota storage, again, is located behind the mobile home. Consistent with the City Council direction to maintain that the display not be permanent along the entry corridor, staff is recommending a two-year extension of the mobile home display and the temporary vehicle storage for the Toyota until the dealership is complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Questions, staff? No questions?
I do have a question. Has there been any communication with the owner of the property?
Yes, they're in support of extending this. And I think their lease is not for two years. It's more temporary based on if another project were to come in in that location for development.
Has Red Tree made any motions to indicate they may have some plans for that property?
The only project in the near future is with the SoCal Water District and during construction, utilizing that site for ongoing
Storage?
For storage and, yeah, for construction. And that was part of their plan that was reviewed by the Planning Commission previously.
Aye. Okay. We open this, members of public. Anyone in the public who'd like to address this issue, please come forward. Is the applicant here?
They're not.
Okay. Return to council.
Motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Second. Discussion, anyone? We're okay.
Friendly amendment. Generous drought tolerant landscaping added, please, to the front of it. I sat across from it for a while today just looking at it. And that part, kind of on the left side, could use something. And right on, by, by the street.
Can you go to the map so we can see what you're talking about?
No, so I, I mean, I hate to ask for planting. I hate to ask for anything that's going to need any water. But I'd say giant cactus, you know, right there on the left, right in that corner, that yellow corner there, that triangle, you know, it, we need to soften that a little bit because it's not very attractive. And we want to look at, you know, Capitola businesses, we wouldn't let somebody do that if they came in. We would make them landscape it and make it more attractive in the front there. So you're right there, right there on the left, from them, that fence and open, well, the whole thing, I don't even know if that's ever opened very mu, very often. Is that open very often? Probably not.
It's open when they're open.
Right. So I don't, we think we can ask them to put anything there. But from, from that, that gate down would be really nice to have, have something there that, I mean, it doesn't even look that nice in person. That, that picture looks better than it does in person.
Yeah, I
My inclination is to say yes, but it, right now, as I sit here and we haven't had a drop of rain, I'm reluctant.
Well, that's why I say drought tolerant cactus.
I, I, I understand. I just, I'm so reluctant to say anything that has to do with water. We, we've got in our next item, we're going to figure out how we're going to cut out all these landscaping areas. And I feel like I'm talking out of both ends of my mouth if I say, put something that we have to water. I don't care.
No, I'm not, so I'm saying, you know, drought tolerant.
Yeah, I, I, I realize, I think we all, nothing against this business here. I think we all want this business to go away. And they're not here so I can say that. I think we all think it's a nice
[laughing]
I can say this.
They may have television sets.
They may have a television set and, you know, but, but none of us wants this here, but it's serving a purpose.
And it can be more attractive. That's my point.
I think, I think we could solve it. Instead of talking about landscaping, how about addressing just the fence?
What can you do to it?
Well
White paint? I mean, is that what you're talking?
That would be better.
How about if we paint the fence?
Or, you know, I don't know if that, that, I don't know if that fence would hold the weight of paint. I seriously, I question that.
Can I do that in lieu of the, the
I don't know. I want to see what everybody else thinks. Am I the only one with good taste?
Nothing there is a good taste. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I went by and talked to the owner today. And, you know, I got the, the feeling that he doesn't know how long he's going to stay there. I mean, he's going month to month. And it's a great location. He loves the location and he loves the car exposure, et cetera, and stuff like that. So if, if we decide to go along with some improvements and stuff, and you're absolutely right, I walked around it, it does, does look pretty dismal, you know. You know, I don't know how much investment he wants to make in it, quite frankly.
Four fake trees up there? I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, you can see it from there. It's, it, we should make him do something about that because that we wouldn't give somebody a permit for. That was my point when we were, I was standing there today. We wouldn't have somebody come in there and do a development permit and allow them to do, just get away with that.
How about some tan bark on the right-hand side?
No.
What?
I mean, those, the roses aren't even, aren't even really very attractive. I mean, they tried to, you know, plant some roses there when we complained about the, the aesthetics of it before. But, you know, I'm sure there must be some things that they can do. I'm not sure what, but something inexpensive, it doesn't require water, that can be attractive, that doesn't, isn't necessarily, you know, artificial plants or artificial trees or artificial grass. But, you know, there must be something to, to do to that area that can make it more attractive. And it may be there for two years. I'm just saying, I don't want to look at that for two years.
Any flamingos?
No.
I don't know. Trying to go with a theme here.
I just have a question for Steve. I know you're in the back, but if we said to you, work with the owner to try to come up with something that's agreeable.
Yeah, they'll put one tree there.
No, I, I think Steve's representing the city.
No, it would be Katie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Katie. I'm awfully sorry. Excuse me. So would that be a reasonable approach? Because I have to admit, Stephanie's right. It looks horrible. I walked around there today. It looks horrible. Would that be something you, you could take on and work with them and come up with something?
Sure. I can reach out to Red Tree and ask them if they could do, make the entrance, beautify it.
Because Red Tree's gang rant and, yeah. Would that be agreeable with you, Steph?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
You made the motion. Is that okay with you? Yeah, you're the guy.
Katie, are you just going to ask them without any specific if they could just do something to make it look nice?
Would you like it to be a condition that they?
I would like to, you know, what I'm wanting to amend it to is I was ready to just approve it as is because I, I wanted to go away. But what I want to do is I would approve it, I would accept a condition that said that you were going to ask them to do some enhancement in the form of a plant or a bush or something or paint to just make it look better. And I would leave it up to their discretion.
And then they'll put one tree. I mean, and we have, we have to give them a little more direction than that.
We can, we can actually make it acceptable to staff.
Yeah.
Bring it, bring it, design it susceptible to staff.
Okay.
It utilizes drought tolerant or minimal water use that beautifies the front.
Subject to staff approval. We can do that.
We have
Would there be, would there be a normal minimum Would there be a normal minimum standard we would demand on something like this? I mean...
We can certainly...
They don't want to turn this into a project.
Right.
Sure.
Right.
They have been utilizing the property ongoing for, you know, they've got Toyota there, they've got this project, and then when the SoCal Water comes in, so I don't think it's reaching too far to ask for simple improvements to, say, the fence and some planting on the front, drought tolerant.
I have great faith in Katie, I think we can let her work it out with the applicant.
I mean, even just painting it and putting benches or something to make it look, you know, look better, of course, then we'd have problems with, you know, probably the benches or people sleeping there or something, but yeah, you, I mean, you know, something substantial, but it's not going to, you know, cost them a fortune, but will really improve that area, because that's, that shouldn't be acceptable to us.
Okay.
Give us, tell us, I will amend it to give us something, at the discretion of, of staff.
Staff, okay. I'm sorry to put you on the...
No worries.
You had the second on that motion.
Yeah.
Are you okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, let's move this along. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, consideration of Esplanade Park water use plan, Steve, please.
So, in September of last year, the council reviewed various options for reducing the water consumption, citywide and water recycling options mainly at Esplanade Park. That town we're kind of focused on, can we recycle the shower water that's there? We did some studies and realized there wasn't a great deal of shower water actually being used, averages about fifty gallons a day, and that wasn't enough to revive the lawns that we had there. So, where staff was given direction to look for more options where we could do some turf reduction throughout the city, and based on that direction, we came up with the following, we looked at the following, turf reduction options, we can reduce about eight thousand square feet of turf at Monterey Park. And I have maps, and I'll show you where these are in a minute. At Jade Street Park, we can reduce it by thirty-four hundred square feet. Noble Gulch, Eddie Ray identified about sixty-five hundred square feet of park reduction. We also looked at turf replacement options for Esplanade Park. We're talking about the two lower lawns here, not necessarily the upper lawn, which are about twenty-eight hundred square feet. And we looked at recycling options for the shower water at Esplanade Park and a, and a rainwater catchment, which would be a much larger system. So, really quickly, I'll go through the parks here, show you what we're talking about for turf reduction. This is Monterey Park, and we're talking about the two areas highlighted in black here. Those total about eight thousand. Both of these are, you know, what we're trying to identify is lower value use. Obviously, the playing field is a high-value turf that we want to maintain and keep green, make it safe for people to play on. These areas are, yes, the lawns may be pretty, but the amount of lawn there doesn't justify the amount of water we're using. So, that's Esplanade, Monterey Park. At Jade Street Park, there's a little lawn here by the entrance that we were recommending, and then along the backside. We would include a pathway here that goes through the, we're still leaving it around the playground area, we're leaving it here where some people gather and meet, but these two areas, we think we could reduce. I will mention that Jade Street Park, I will, if directions, to remove those lawns are going forward, I will need to negotiate that with the school district, who is the property owner there. Noble Gulch Park inside, this is a black and white photo, but we're talking about kind of upper area down here, and I really, in my recommendation, as you saw in the agenda package, is to kind of hold off on this. I think we could move forward with this, but I still, this is a rather, I think it has some higher value, at least aesthetically, than the other two areas, so I'm a little more hesitant to try and remove this area right now, but it's something we can look at in the future. And then looking at Esplanade Park, just so we get an idea, we have three lawn areas. I'll start at the upper area, behind the seawall. This has grass that doesn't require much water, it's, it survived last summer quite well, and it was usable out the summer. Both our discussions last year and now, we're not really talking about changing that at all. Two areas we have focused on are this one in front of the beach and the one over by the Patina Arms Restaurant by the showers. You know, last summer, this died on us, we were unable to recover it due to the water restrictions, and this one also had severe dry, diegenic AS. So, we're trying to focus on what to do with these two areas. We came up with two options of replacing that sod and replanning it and identifying that it is a high-use area. Both these get a lot of people lying on them, sitting on them, storing surfboards on them, putting all their wet suits on it when they're on the shower, so they do get a lot of use. So, looking at the turf options, to maintain the turf at Esplanade Park, we're talking about three thousand dollars to replant the two lower areas that need replacing, and we would maintain the upper lawn. To put artificial turf, the small area by the Brit cost about seventy-five hundred dollars to put artificial turf in there, and the large area would be about twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. You know, the pros and cons, we cover in the report, obviously, the natural turf is, people are used to it, it's easy to walk on, doesn't get warm, sand buildup, we just have to mow it, we can kind of control the sand buildup on it. Animal waste, dogs and all that are absorbed into the lawn pretty well and don't cause any problems. Artificial turf, obviously, there's no water reduc, there's a huge water reduction, but there's some unknown maintenance issues. What about the animal waste that accumulates there? The sand buildup that occurs, and other things that we just don't know. You know, our recommendation right now is to stick and replant the lawns, but I will throw in that if we do want to try artificial at all, I'd recommend that maybe we try it on the smaller area by the Brit and see how it does. It's not the main area there, but if we want to try it, that would be, or I think would be a good place to start. Regarding recycling, water recycling, I know in the staff report, I talked about a twenty thousand dollar fix to the drainage system for the shower. Basically, right now, all the water in the shower goes into a pit, and it actually just leaches into the ground. It doesn't make it up into the sewer lateral and go into the wastewater system, so there's some kind of leakage in it, which is fine until we want to try and capture it. But I've talked with Eddie Ray, so I mentioned in the staff report, that'd be about twenty thousand dollars to get something real in there, and at fifty gallons a day, it's just not worth it. Couple, last couple days, I've been working with our maintenance superintendent, Eddie Ray Garcia, and we've talked about it, and we think we can, you know, try and do something a little more manual, if I can, you know, we'd put a pipe down there, we would buy a pump and just kind of try on occasion, you know, plugging the pump in, putting it in there and watering the lawn next to it, and I think we could do that for about two thousand dollars, and I think that would be good. I think the big thing we want to do is try and get up onto the showers themselves, signage that says this water is being recycled, and I think we can do that, and I think that's a good thing for us to do. Large rain catchment, about thirty, fifty thousand dollars. And I really think, you know, we should do that if we, you know, I think somewhere in the near future, we're going to probably try and redesign that park, and I think we can bring it in at that time, it's not worth it at this point. So, our recommendations tonight are to replant the lower areas, remove the lawn at Monterey Park and at Jade Street Park with the school park, school district's permission. We defer the lawn reduction at Noble Gulch Park until later, and at Public Works, construct this small recycling system for the showers. That's my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to staff?
I have one question. For the lawn at Noble Gulch, how far back would that go, to the bench, or?
Yeah, it'd be the, I'll go to the map here.
The bench near the trees.
So, the benches are right in this area right here, so kind of go back behind there where the driveway ties in, it would be the, where the lawn first starts coming this direction.
Okay.
And go down here. And talking with the maintenance superintendent, it's pretty easy to remove it here, and we may move forward with that. It's this area that I think we really need to think about and decide if that's best for the public.
Is there a way to keep that front corner area in the, in the design, Steve? In other words, take out between the houses, leave the, leave the front face there at the corner, and then, and then the, you know, part up towards the school?
So, I'm sorry, to remove the...
Take, take, take the golf club off of it.
I'm sorry, one more time.
Keep that, keep that area.
Keep that area?
Keep that area green. That's pretty visual going in that neighborhood there, coming around that corner, I'd hate to see that.
Right, okay.
Lawn brown.
Yeah, that's my, and that's exactly what my concerns were with Noble Gulch Park.
So, take your, take that, take that horizontal line and just maybe draw it straight across, so you keep the corner in.
Okay, keep that and do everything else.
Just all the stuff backwards so it's invisible back there.
Yeah, that certainly would be possible.
Next to Richard and Helen's house, that's pretty much, that's a slope, and you'd pretty much have it drought tolerant, so you're, you're going to extend that?
Yeah, we would extend, right now, the lawn comes up about halfway here, so yes, we could take this line here, keep the frontage green.
Yeah.
And then do all the rest of that, that would certainly be possible.
Makes more sense.
You could probably do that now, right?
With your direction, we'd be happy to do it.
Well, it's what you feel you can do, I think, you know?
So, what about, what about at the front of Monterey Park? That one section that faces the neighborhood there? The one, the one on the left, maybe not as crucial because you have parking lot in front of them, but the one on the right there?
Yeah, this one?
That faces those houses there, and it's kind of, I don't know, it's, I don't, I, maybe somebody from the neighborhood tells us how much use that gets, but I, I don't, you're right next to the ballpark, so you're right, well...
My, my take on it is, you know, the players playing ballpark kind of hang out in the foul territory here. I, you know, I've been up there a couple times, I don't spend a lot of time up there. This isn't a high use, it's more there for visual attraction, and I think it's a perfect spot.
There'll still be landscape there, won't there?
Yeah, we'll still have landscape there if we want, we could add some more benches there if we're worried about having places to sit that we're eliminating. But I think that's, that's the type of area we should be targeting to try and remove the lawn from.
Could we go back to Jade Street? Picture Jade Street? I wanted to consider perhaps not watering the front part, because there, again, that's the entrance. And while it may not be heavily used, there are people that do, that do hang out there sometimes for junior guards and other things, and it would be nice to have something there. And then in the area in the back, that's also used by a lot of kids that go out there and are waiting out there or hanging out out there or doing things out there, so...
Oh, on the side where the school is?
Not really, the, the bottom part there. So, I'm wondering if we just do what I did at my house, which is just, don't water, it comes back. You know, the, it's mostly clover, that's, that's not real high-value lawn. It's, it's a lot of clover and crabgrass and all kinds of other things, so it's not real pure lawn, so if you just let it die, it dies, but then if you're lucky enough to get some rain and so forth, it comes back.
So, I think...
So, I'd like to consider that for, at least for a year, to see where we are.
This area, I think we did, this, you know, I'm not sure this is an isolated area in our irrigation system out there, that we can just say we're not going to water this area, it's probably tied into here, and so part of this work was to go in and take this irrigation, turn it into a drip system so we could have some landscaping there. If we don't want it irrigated, I mean, I'll have to talk with Eddie Ray Garcia and figure out, how can we isolate this in the irrigation system?
Yeah, because if you, if you go in the upper right-hand corner and you start at the building there.
Uh huh.
Where there is all the bark and all the other little plants, and you go down that corner, it's really not very attractive. And so, to carry that down and have more of that same on the bottom part, I was just looking for another alternative of maybe seeing if we could do without watering it for a year, see what happens next year, and then we can take a look at it again then. Just because that other area, go over and look at that, that other is not that attractive, and people do use that, that back grass area for, for summer activ, a lot of summer activities.
Yeah, there's still, you know, this is all kind of, this isn't flat, this is a hillside, this is really the flat lawn area where I think the majority of the people are gathering. You know, we're, we're trying to identify how to, how to reduce our water consumption here, so...
Okay. So, so far, what we hear is that there's support for all of your proposals, Steve, with the exception of Noble Gulch and keeping the front there, is there any other...
Just modify that, you just walk through that line, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any other, is there any discussion? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Sorry, anybody from the public?
Oh, excuse me, anybody publicly, please come forward.
Council members, my name is Richard Lippi. I still live at six-twenty Monterey Avenue.
It is getting late.
It, it looks like my showing up at the council meetings is not, it's not paying off too well, and we're getting a lot of hits on Monterey over here, but I do have some questions on this, and I, and I see the importance of cutting back. So, Mr. Jesper, the, the trees right over, that's, that's what you've circled, right? The lawn under the trees?
Yes.
Is that a zone? Do you know that that's a watering zone?
I, it's probably not an isolated zone, though, we'll have to go in there and modify it, yes.
And would it just, would you just not water it, and then the grass will stay, and as Ms. Harland was pointing out, when we do get rain, it'll, it'll come back? Is that the idea?
Our proposal was to actually remove the lawn and put in a drought-tolerant landscape and a drip irrigation system.
Oh. Wouldn't it be cheaper to use, leave the lawn? Okay.
The aesthetics of a dead lawn are a personal choice, I guess.
Okay, well, all right. It does get a lot of use, that area, because it's shaded by the eucalyptus trees, I can tell you, can tell you for a fact, it gets a lot of use, that's where the shade is. That other one over there, it doesn't get much use, but it, it does look beautiful, but the, the upper one doesn't, doesn't get much use. Now, is, is this plant, does this plan change with the installation of the proposed skatepark that would remove six thousand square feet?
So, that, right now, the skatepark plan is in here.
It's, yeah.
If it gets modified and gets pushed in, in another area, certainly we're, have the ability to adjust what we're, what we're doing here.
Okay.
Removing the lawn won't affect the skatepark design.
Okay, I, I would, I would just like to suggest leaving the lawn for a while under the, under the trees, rather than planting something else, just because it's a high-use area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tricia Proctor. So, I wanted to talk about the Esplanade Park, and it was just the lower level, the eighteen-hundred square feet. I'm down there all the time, but I was thinking it would be nice to do, like, cement benches and maybe incorporate a community art project, so that was just an idea. I was just down there, well, down there all the time, but just this last weekend, and I was looking at it, and I thought, this would be nice to have like three or four benches, and then generate some sort of an income with the community art project, bricks and tiles.
I think we're, we're doing redesign on all of Esplanade Park, are we not?
Well, it's something that we've talked about doing in the future, we're not actively working on it right now, but certainly on the agenda to do at some point.
Yeah, just an idea, just throwing it out there.
Good idea, Jessica.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public like to address this? I mean, none? Back to council, decision?
So, do, do we have a consensus on, do we just want to stop watering in areas, or do we want to put in the drought-tolerant landscaping in these areas? I mean, it's truly your council direction on that, and I'm willing to try whatever...
I think you could just try not watering, excuse me, Monterey Park, just let, let the lawn just die off a little bit, and then we'll see, it'll, it'll come back again in the winter, just, it'll, it'll just be browned. Let it, let it die off, then we don't have to put any...
Both areas of Monterey Park?
Yeah, just leave that, just leave both areas of Monterey Park like there, let it die off.
Yeah, I agree with Richard, underneath those trees, kids are using them.
Okay, well, just, just let it go then, Steve.
Okay, and at Jade Street Park?
And the reason why we're, I mentioned is because I talked to people out there, and they said that children do use that area, even though it's sloped. But I understand, you know, a dead lawn doesn't look very good, but I just thought it, rather than, than removing it, that if it's, if it is somehow in use by kids today, it, that if it's, if it is somehow in use by kids today, keep it.
Why don't we do that again there, then? Why don't we just stop, just stop watering, Steve? It'll be cheapest for us, too. Okay?
And at Noble Gulch, since we'll make sure we got it all?
Same thing there, I don't...
Same thing with, with the new line, the new line that, that we created.
New line we created.
And let everything else die.
Okay.
Is that, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could you indulge a recommendation? Is, I would recommend at Noble Gulch. I think that we probably are overgrasped, in my experience. And I think that a well-designed, drought tolerant landscaping there would be a real appropriate, at the Noble Gulch site in particular. And maybe potentially at the front door of the community center. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the dead grass right at our entrance to our community center. It's a relatively...
I agree, that's the place you could...
It's a relatively small area, and the amount of water gain...
Jamie, would you say with, with Noble Gulch, that the areas that we're taking out of landscape, we would be doing anyway? In other words, is, is that a park you, we want to reduce in lawn area overall?
You know, I, I mean, I think we all see this a lot, right? We spend a lot of time. It's an intersection, at least, you know, if you live or work on the side of town. I go by it several times a day. And the number of times that I've seen somebody outside of the areas, you know, when saving the area that you recommended saving, I, I literally can count on one hand. So to me, I think that there's probably more turf area than necessary in that park. And I think a conversion to, to a nice drought tolerant landscaping would make a lot of sense, particularly in that setting.
Are we okay with that?
I would be okay with that.
Okay. You got your direction, Steve?
Got it.
Just one, one additional comment. You know, I, I'm, when it comes to the astroturf, we had all the discussion last time about that. I, I do somewhat like the idea of, of trying it. And if we did try it on, it would be the place, the first place to try would be in that section in front of the Brit. However, I'm not advocating we do it this year. I think this year, we go into the dry mode, we try, um, whatever the new system you're going to try to create to water. And we, I, I say we go ahead and resaw it like your plan, like was specified. And I think that if, if we decide at the end of next year, then maybe we can come back next year and say that we should do a trial of turf in that area. But, but I think we're, the direction we're going for this right now, that at least gives you and public works a chance to play with that pump and see if it, you know, at least could water that section, then it would be, it might be a win-win. And I think the point about advertising that we are reclaiming the water takes a lot of heat off this, so...
I have a question about artificial turf. Since we have so many dogs down in the village, what's the, the maintenance like for, for artificial turf? Do we actually have to go out and maybe wash it occasionally or something?
Do you actually, um, you, do kind of hose it down every now and then? Just because it still has a sand base, and the, and the moisture will still go through. So you're picking it up, and then kind of lightly hosing it off on occasion. And there's also a type of a vacuum that they recommend that you do on it, too, to do it, so...
Got a direction from us, Steve?
I got it.
Okay, so somebody give a motion, and we'll just second what...
Motion to accept staff, staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion second, all's in favor?
Aye.
So carries. Thank you. Okay, we moved to, to item F on the agenda, consideration to establish a time, time limit for the, for the submission of a completed project application for opponents for the Monterey Park skatepark. Staff report, please.
Yeah, I don't have a lot. We were requested to place this item on the agenda. The last meeting, the council, by 3-2 vote, gave us direction, or gave proponents of a skatepark at Monterey Park authority to kind of proceed along the, getting an application together and submitting for a development permit. We've been asked to place on the agenda a chance for the council to consideration to put some time limits on that.
I pressed for this item, and it was not necessarily to discourage the project, but rather to inspire it. We have seen this project before languish. I want to see something decisive happen. Mr. City Manager, what, or Katie, or Rich, what would the applicant be expected to bring with them deposit-wise to get this into the planning commission mill and start the process?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. We've estimated an initial deposit of approximately $40,000. That'll cover some technical studies and a preparation of an EIR, plus the staff time. The way a deposit works, as you all know, is if the money isn't spent, we return it to the applicants. And of course, if we need any more, we request it.
Well, explain the process to us.
So the, the first step is to get a submission of an application. Basically, a full, complete, accurate set of plans and a deposit. Once we have that, we'll start the sequel process, prepare the EIR, circulate it for public review, respond to any comments, and then have a hearing before the planning commission.
I mean, these aren't full construction documents. These are...
They're, they're site plan level.
They're site plans, landscaping plan. So it's not structural, or, you know, not a deep set of plans.
That's correct.
But a full set of plans with a deposit to planning.
That's correct.
And what would, what's appropriate for both of you? Tell us, what would be appropriate if we were doing this with any developer? Is 90 days the right way to go? Is 120 days? What, what do you feel is fair, but specific?
I think either 90 or 120 days is ample time for somebody that's motivated and has the resources behind them to submit plans and the deposit. We did have a chance to speak to the applicants, and they didn't seem to, you know, have any concerns with that timeline. But they can correct me if I'm mistaken.
Good.
Is, is, this is, this is only appealable to the council, correct? It does not go to council?
I believe there will be a council action to exercise some kind of right-of-entry permit. But the design permit and the coastal development permit, if it's needed, would be decided by the planning commission and by the council on appeal.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Is there questions to staff, anyone? Okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the council on this issue? Everybody's happy. Oh, please, no, come...
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I just wanted to go on the record saying I do not support this action. Instead, I would ask the city council to consider a park and recreation strategic plan process. A parks and recreation strategic planning process creates a sustainable parks and recreation facility and services. This plan would build on the strong foundation of the recently completed general plan. The goal of this strategic plan is to serve the needs of all of the community. The development of the plan would be guided by community input. It would be a multi-layered, public input process designed to ensure a diverse cross-section of all the residents and visitors to Capitola to participate. The goal is to achieve a balance of strong quantitative data and strong qualitative data to inform the process. The community would identify types of activities they want, such as children's activities, socializing and relaxing, dedicated sports areas, respite and solitude areas. In the current process before you know, I am concerned that we have not incorporated good planning principles. We are instead making one-at-a-time ad hoc decisions. As it is said, and I quote, "Having a plan does not ensure success, but neglecting to plan often leads to failure," end of quote. Making one-at-a-time recreational land use planning decisions in the absence of a comprehensive parks and rec strategic plan does a disservice to the full citizenry of Capitola, especially given our limited resources. We need the full community participating in a planning process directed by our planning staff to create the best vision for our community parks and recreation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. My name is Richard Lippi. I still on Monterey Avenue in the same place. I just like to explain, well, first, I'd like to give out kudos. I'd like to give out kudos to the city council for all the time that you put in on all the issues surrounding Capitola. I love living in Capitola. Thank you very much for your time. I could never do it, and I sure appreciate you doing that. I appreciate the fact that you've got a skatepark under construction at McGregor. I appreciate the time that Sue gave to me to help me navigate the, the website, to find the information that I needed on the web, on, on the skatepark. And I also appreciate what Steve Jesperk has given to me in the way of information. Some of my credentials are that I've been in construction for 53 years. My parents were general contractors. I started at the age 13. And I've been involved in several developments. What concerns me about this particular development is that the, the neighboring, the bordering neighbors feel that they've been left out. And I can tell you, just from my personal experience, living at 620 Monterey Avenue, in the about four years that this discussion has been out there for the skatepark, not once have I gotten a notice or, or a personal invitation to participate in the process, even though I sent in a letter giving my qualifications and asking if I could help on the project. I'm a win-win guy. And I would like to see a skatepark at Capitola that, that fills the need. Because I've been in the stores, and I see that there's, there's a growing need. But this particular plan that was sent out here, which is the only plan that most of the neighbors have, this little eight and a half by 11 reduced copy, which is not to scale, and blacks out the site plan, which by the way, is about eight years old, Google map, is, is really not enough for the neighbors to understand what's going on. This actually raises more questions than it, than it answers. And I think that the neighbors need a lot of time and an opportunity to come before the council and tell you what their concerns are. I'm really surprised. I've, I've offered to, to help out the organizers, Tricia and Marie, and I've been pushed away. The opponents have asked me to give them my input with my credentials, and so I do. But I really want a win-win situation here. I don't want neighbors to see neighbors fighting one another. I like Capitola. I like to be friendly with my neighbors. I don't want to go to Nob Hill, and I've seen Tricia and Marie shopping, and, and I turn around and go the opposite way, because I feel like we're opponents. I don't think that this project is going in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. And you will have a public, you will have a public process on this?
I think we only have one meeting now. Vice Mayor...
You need to use a microphone.
Oh, just one question.
Vice Mayor, did you give my letter to the clerk?
She hasn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Dan Steiger, Capitola. We pushed this project through for the children of Capitola. So after, after it went through, I'm thinking, you know, it was never mentioned that east of, of Capitola, east of Park Avenue, is all unincorporated area, and there is no skateparks out there clear to Watseville. So hopefully, in, in this EIR report, we're going to see some, some reporting on what kind of impact we're going to have outside of the city of Capitola. I think it's going to be wharf to wharf every weekend there. And you guys know it. So that report better reflect some study on that. And I'll be waiting to hear from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else in the public like to address this? Please step forward. I mean, none? Return to council.
I'd like to move this time limit for the application, the plans and the deposit to be brought to the city within 90 days of the date of the review by the city council, which was two weeks ago.
I'll second.
I'm going to vote against it, just because I don't like treating applicants differently. I think everybody needs to be treated the same. We pretty much have done a really good job of that.
And we've done a good job of, of stretching this argument out for three or four years.
It's not my fault.
No, but, well, it is our fault, because, you know, we, in the interest of consistency, you know, it was approved one time for 6,000. It was approved again for 6,000 in concept to be brought to the planning concept, the planning commission. But I think that we need to either make sure it happens, or be certain it doesn't happen. And if, believe me, if a developer came to me and created this kind of division in neighborhoods, and we went through two full hearings that were virtually identical, at the second hearing, I would have to say enough, do this or don't do this.
But we don't do this with other people, is my point. You know, and we should just be consistent, no matter what the issue, no matter whether it's, you know, a hot-button issue or not. Just everybody goes through the, everybody goes through the process the same. And that's, our reputation is really, really important. And we want to maintain our reputation with having the utmost integrity, that we don't treat people differently, that we don't treat applications differently. So I think, I mean, people are going to say that. They're going to say, oh, we were, they were, you know, they treated this one differently, too fast, too slow, whatever, whatever.
No, I think this one...
We don't want, this one's already been too controversial.
This one tarnished our reputation.
We want it, a real clean process here without any...
That's what I want. That's all I want.
Any bumps on our, our side of people criticizing the city for handling it differently.
Rich, could you come forward for a second, please?
I mean, look at how many extensions we gave Mr. Beersley and Floyd over, over the Rissman Mansion.
Yeah.
You know, we treated them differently. We got a lot of criticism for it.
Consider our reputation after that one.
At where?
Consider our reputation after that one.
I know. I'm trying, still trying to recover our reputation.
Rich, would you explain to us, is this application any different than, that can be put forward by anyone that wants a development? And will you treat it any differently than, than an application that would be put forward by any developer that comes to the city?
The direction I heard at the last meeting was to treat this application, consistent with any other application. And that's what we intend to do.
So we don't need a motion. We don't need this at all.
What we're asking for here is just a, I think, is just, the only we're asking for is give a time limit to the applicants to, to, to submit before...
No, I, no, I understand, and I, you know, I understand all your reasons for it. I'm just saying, if somebody else walked in the door, are we going to do that to them?
Yes. If they did this exact same thing, over the course of three years, I would do the exact same, I would take the exact same action.
Yeah, I, I think the effort here is to be fair. And I, we never got the proposal for Monarchova when it came in. The developer came in with a project. We acknowledged the project. We received the project. The city took a deposit for the EIR. The era was completed. And then the project went away. And that could happen in this case. I mean, the developer has the decision to proceed with the project or, or, or terminate the project. And all we're doing in this situation is, is we're saying, we don't want this to linger. We want, we want the developer's real, and he wants the project. We're going to put a time limit on it. But we're going to follow the same guidelines we do on every project. So I don't want to make any new policies for how we deal with something. I don't want to reinvent the wheel. We have a, we have a policy. We have a system that works in this city. We have capable people to handle the EIR. I, I have great faith in our staff that they're going to present us with a, a process that the neighbors are going to be involved in, and it's going to be a process that everybody gets to participate in. At the end of the day, we're going to make a final decision whether we accept it. And that's what we're here to vote on. We already have a second on, on the motion?
But we don't need a motion to, to do the right thing. We don't need a motion to do our usual thing. That's what's, that's what's unusual about this. It's, it's a lot of paperwork and time for something we don't really need. If we're going to just do the usual thing, we should just do it. We don't need a motion, an agenda item, and discussion, and minutes, and the whole thing.
It's just a time limit. It's just like, you know what? If it's real, it's real. And if it's not, it goes away once and for all. I think that's the only, I think, that, I think that's, that's why I feel about...
We can, we can tell them that personally, though. We don't need to make a whole, you know, city issue of just following our, our own regular procedures. That's my point.
Yeah, I think the process was flawed. I really do. I think the way it has been carried out is going to linger. And the reason why I second this motion is because I don't want it to linger as it did before. I want it to come to full public discussion, so that the issues are aired, the neighborhood has a chance to be involved. The issues that have been sort of talked about, but not fully, will have a decent chance to be vetted. The project was flawed. Hopefully, if we get to a point of actually public review on this project, we might have a chance to fully vet it. So that's why I second it.
But we, but we do anyway, John. It's, that's really duplicative. We have, we're going to do all of that anyway.
I, you know, Mr. Mayor, okay, I actually am trying to understand you, Steph. I really am. But the reason, one of the reasons why this process was flawed was because it was in development for two and a half years, and got to a point that it just was sprung on the neighborhood. The neighborhood wasn't prepared for what hit them. There was no public discussion to get these issues out, so the neighborhood had a chance to respond. Quite frankly, I saw movement in the neighborhood. But if you have a process that's divisive, you create that, and I don't want it to continue. So I agree with Mike. I would like to get to a point where we could have the discussion that we should have been having in the last two and a half years.
And we will. We will.
Well, it didn't happen the first time it was available, so this motion will make sure it happens.
And I'm going to vote against it, and it's going to look like, for some reason, I'm not for a public process. And that's not fair.
No, I'm not...
Because my point, I know, but that's, you know, and I, please, please don't report that, Johnny, because I've gotten caught in that before, where I've been, you know, the, the one vote, and it was... the, the, the one vote, and it wasn't really reported. Why? I voted that way and I got a lot of heat, I get a lot of heat from that. I got to tell you, I'm, I'm okay with it because I can explain myself. So this is just about process. It's just about, about, we don't need this motion. We don't, we don't need to do this because we're going to follow the usual process.
Can I, can I ask a question of Rich?
Um, Rich, can you come back, please? Or maybe Jamie, since you're here longer. I, I'm trying to understand when we have or when we have not put limits on when the application has to come before the city.
The only other example, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bertrand, the only other example I can think of with the limits was another project on public property, which would have been the Rispin. So frankly, I think when you're considering an invitation from a private developer to build a property on public, public land, I think the notion of time limits does make sense. Otherwise, you can have interminable processes. So obviously, wouldn't apply in a situation where a private developer is doing a project on their private land, where you're inviting someone to propose something on public land, timelines can be a rational approach to the process.
So would it behoove us to do that for Rispin?
We did.
We did.
Repeatedly.
We just kept extending it year after year after year.
Okay, so we want to set a limit now and we don't want to extend-
We have limits in our, in our, in our rules. We have these already.
No, no, there's no limit like this in our rules.
Yes, there is. This is following our rules, our usual-
They could take, if we didn't set this, Stephanie, they can take the next, six months to a year and submit to us. The council's made a decision to move this thing forward to discuss it. And in that, there's no, there's no regulations that says when they have to submit. What, what is being proposed here is, is that we want to give them, we would like to see a time limit to win the time that they can, they need to bring it to the public. And what we're asking them to do is within ninety days, submit, submit their application to the public, moving this project forward. Otherwise, we don't have any rules to tell them.
I know. And I, no, and I understand it and I think that's a great idea, but I just don't think we should treat any applicants differently particularly than others. That they, everybody should follow the same rules and-
I think that's a good reason. I accept that. Okay.
I'd just like to know, I get that get out of jail free card, John D., so I can not be quoted, okay? Because I'd like to use that, too.
Nice try.
We, we have a motion to second here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose?
No.
Okay. Got one abstention. Okay, we're going to go back on the agenda now. We're going to go back to appointments to committees. And what worked out good, Stephanie, for you is your appointment to the, the Traffic and Circulation Committee. Now you, we've already had a decision.
I'm going to continue that.
Continue it? Okay. What about the other one?
Going to continue that.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, the Historic Museum Board, we need to make that decision. And-
I would move the museum board's recommendation.
And what is the person's name on that?
Christian.
Christian.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The other two items, we moved to the consent agenda. All items listed, the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes and action unless members of the public or city council request specific items to be discussed for separate review. Is there any member of the public who would like to pull any members, any items on the consent agenda? Please come forward.
Where do you live, Richard? I'm only kidding.
Six-twenty. Everybody knows.
I want you to come to every meeting.
It's been a long meeting, you may have moved.
You need a member of the public, so please come to me.
Richard Lippi, six-twenty Monterey Avenue. So I'm, I'd like to address the minutes of February eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. I have them with me here. Most of, most of the space is taken up by a list of speakers. And at, at the end, there's just a short summary that's only five, six lines long. And I have to tell you that, as a layperson, I really can't read this. I, I mean, I was at the February eleventh meeting through the whole thing, beginning to end. And I can't really understand what's written here. I think because of the gravity of the issue, the skate park issue, the fact that there's so much concern and so much controversy about this, I would like to see an expansion of the minutes. For example, Harlan opposes. That's it. That's the comment. Harlan opposes. Norton supports. I don't think, feel that those are adequate minutes for this type of, of a subject. I also think that it was important that it was mentioned that this product shall, this project shall proceed as a normal project submittal. I think that that's important to be put in the minutes. I also think that it's important that the discussion went to, all costs incurred by the city shall be paid by the developer. I think that that's important to put in these minutes. I think that's a key issue. And also, I think Mr. Termini's summarization of the sentiment on this project, that ninety-five percent of the bordering neighbors are opposed, eighty percent of the neighbors a block away, it wasn't until we got five blocks away that we had, that we were in favor. I think that months and years down the line, I mean, I see this project being a focus for a long time. And I think it's important to put in the minutes those essential items.
Richard, you do have in the minutes. And I'll tell you why. It's because we record every meeting, both video and audio. It's in the city's website and it will stay there. So it is, it is a recorded minutes of, of our meeting, word for word. And so you do have that. This is, what you're seeing here is a shorter condensed version, and I understand if there's things left out, you have the, you have the right to request those be put in the minutes, and it would take, you know, the council to, to approve that.
Okay.
Yes, you can, if you're requesting.
Yeah.
Are you requesting to put those in?
I am requesting those items.
Do you think the council-
I would, I would accept that and it was, they're significant enough points that, and it, it's slightly paraphrased what I said, but yeah, pretty much what my sentiment was.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I paraphrased.
But I think that, especially the part where all costs, not unlike any other application, will be paid for by the applicant.
Okay, I'll second that. Are we doing that correctly, Jamie?
Yes, we can make the correction to the minute.
Okay. And so, so Sue, have you noted what, what he has to be requesting? Okay. Everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Oh, wait, I have a-
Oh, sorry, Josh.
That's okay. On the check register? So I talked to Jamie a little bit about this earlier. This is a check number seven-nine-six-eight-two, and it's the drain pipe, how much we're paying on that. I didn't quite understand the payment, but I want to take this as an opportunity to request to be put on a future agenda item, a synopsis of everything that's happened with the drain pipe, the costs that we've incurred, the lawsuits, and the current status. And the reason why I'm, I'm requesting that is because I think we, we owe it to the city to explain, you know, what has happened and what the current status is, how much it's cost the city. I don't know if we're going to have any future obligations. So in my mind, I really can't answer those questions when constituents ask me. So I would like to request that we put on a future agenda item, something that actually addresses those issues.
Let's speak-
Or just, or just give him a little, a little report about it? If you still have that, some of that information?
I can-
Just prepare that and-
This is ongoing maintenance to the drain pipe, is it not?
I, I can, I can provide the information either way, either a public hearing or a memo. This actually is the closeout of all the litigation. And what it was, was we received a check from the county, we turned around and cut the check to Ambeja, because you recall, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible. And since Ambeja spent many times that on our behalf, it was basically money that we made, gave back to the insurance company. So it was money in, money out, kind of closing out everything on that.
But this would be a perfect time of year to write a letter to the county to say, while you're preparing your budget, your annual budget, and write it to Zone Five, while you're preparing your budget this year, what is your budget and what are your projects? What are your activities in our area?
We have asked them, through Steve and I, to define where Zone Five is. We don't really know what, under the city, is Zone Five and what is not. We need to ask him to do that. But believe me, Zone Five has no money.
Right.
There isn't like money you're going to get.
Right. But they need, but they need to develop a plan to have some money to fix their, fix their drainage areas that they have.
Okay.
And so that, you know, they, they need to start that, you know?
Okay.
And we know, we know where they are, and before they clog up and, and, you know, flood, whenever we have a rain, you know, they need to clean them out, you know, every couple of years. And-
Okay. We need to define what is ours and what is theirs. Josh, you need to define clearly what you're talking about, whether you're talking about the removal of the tenants, are you talking about the repair, the repair of, of the, of the drain pipe? Are you talking about repair that was required to be by insurance to the village? Or are you talking about the ongoing maintenance?
A good question. I'm talking just about the drain pipe that burst and all the activities that ensued with the county, and if there's any other future issues. I'm concerned about that. And that's the one that people keep asking me about. The, the park and the removal of the tenants and all that, no, I'm not talking about that. That, that is a major issue, too, but I'm, just focused on the drain pipe at this time.
Maybe staff could just provide you with a report.
You know, part of those, and we should be aware that part of the settlements were closed session.
That's right.
Not to be part of a open meeting.
That's correct.
So it may, perhaps after a meeting with staff, Josh, you know, Councilmember Bertrand could reconsider or consider exactly the focus of the item.
Okay, I, I could take that into consideration. My main point is, I, I think this is a subject that the city is well aware of and every, when I was campaigning, there's a lot of questions about it. I could not answer them. And so, as much as we can, I'll, I'll talk with you and figure out what a decent request would be.
Well, yeah, and there's some, there's some old staff reports, too, that probably you can pull out and just, just give to Josh, because there's a lot of old information. I don't, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time doing, you know, hours and hours and hours doing a report. It's, it's all there. We just pull it out and get it for you.
Well, it's not just for me, it's also for the citizens of Capitola. So.
Thank you, Josh. Okay.
I have a second on the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, who made the motion?
Termini.
Oh.
Okay, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Speed limit in Capitola is twenty-five miles an hour. If you drive twenty-five, people will be stuck behind you and they have to drive twenty-five.
Nula Silva Bridge open. Nula Silva Bridge open.
Oh, and the Nula Silva Beach Bridge open today. So if you have a train, you can go.
If you have a train.
All right.
I stole your candy. Hope you don't want it. But I swapped it.
Sue, could you ask Elizabeth for a copy of her remarks?
That sounds strange.
Russell.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Russell, I'm sorry.